Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Select Board meeting for November 6, 2024. I'm going to call this meeting to order at 7:02 PM. In Yolanda, our chair is going to be a little late this evening, but she'll be joining us in a little while. So I'm going to go ahead and I already called the meeting to order, but this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live by WACA TV and live streamed on Facebook. Remote participation is available using the Zoom video conferencing platform. Any disruption with the video conferencing platform will result in the platform being shut down. In the event of a disruption, broadcasting will continue on WACA TV and live streamed on Facebook. And just for the benefit of folks, the Select Board will be going into executive session following our open session tonight. So with that, I'm going to open it up to citizens' participation. If there are folks online that wish to speak, if you could use the raise hand function, and we'll go ahead and recognize you, or if there's anyone else that would like to speak for citizens' participation, come on up.
Thank you. Good evening, Mark Sorni, 119 Main Street. Would like to say thanks to Mr. Dave for bringing out his email about the town election results. I found out from there that this town was 78%, but the rest of the country is not as smart as we are. What I'm going to say is that people can remember, I said this all day long. Do people remember the President Nixon against George McGovern presidential? This is a repeat of that. Don't blame us. We're only from Massachusetts. To the rest of the country. And I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Is there anyone else that would like to speak tonight for citizens' participation? Anyone online?
This is Joan Good Friday.
Hi, Joan. Hold on one second. Could we increase the volume from the folks online a little bit? We can't hear them.
I think that was my fault. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. That sounds good, Joan. Go ahead and you can go ahead and go ahead.
I won't take your time, but I just, I know I sent you folks an email today. I hope you get to see it, and I hope when you get to the 40B section that you'll consider some of the things that I put in there. So I appreciate everything you do, and good luck with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. We appreciate your sending us an email and coming here tonight, too. Thank you.
You're welcome. Take care.
Is there anyone else here for citizens' participation? Okay, the next thing on our agenda is a tax classification hearing, but we are a little early. So do we want to, do we want to? Do consent agenda? Okay. All right. So could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that passes 4-0. Is there anything else on our agenda that we can talk to quickly? Or I can read the reminders?
Yeah.
Okay, why don't I read the reminders? So I'll make a reminder that the Citizens Academy program will begin in January 2025. This is a 10-week program that will be meeting on the second and fourth Wednesday of each month from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. Interested parties are encouraged to complete an application on the town's website. Definitely encourage folks to apply if you're interested. There's a reminder that municipal buildings will be closed on Monday, November 11th, which is Veterans Day. A reminder that special town meeting will take place on Tuesday, November 19th, at Ashland High School Auditorium at 7:00 PM. And we will be offering childcare for anyone that wishes to take advantage of that. So. Reminder that yard waste collection is every Monday with the last pickup on Monday, November 25th, 2024. Make sure you put all your leaves and bags and leave them out first thing in the morning on Monday morning. Reminder that the pre-Thanksgiving farmers market will take place on Saturday, November 23rd, at 125 Front Street from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And a reminder that textile and clothing recycling, that pickups must be scheduled with Simple Recycling, and the number to call is 1-866-835-5068, or online at simplerecycling.com. So that takes care of our reminders for this evening.
Would you want me to just give an update on the technology upgrades?
Yeah, sure. That works. Make sure your mic's on.
The technology upgrade could be get upgraded mics. How's that?
That works.
So I think at our last meeting, I had mentioned to the board that we're working with WACA to look at making some upgrades into this room specifically. So we have had some issues with the projector. And just some, believe it or not, some of this equipment is quite a few years old, even though we were around when it was installed. That just means we're old, too. So, yeah. I know, Joe, I did kind of look right at you when I said that. That was not, I was just not on purpose. But anyway, we've worked with Paul and Barbara at WACA. And so what we will be doing is replacing this screen with an 85-inch television screen. It's going to be framed. We'll actually have the seal as part of that. We're going to have two 65-inch TV screens located on the wall. That way for the audience, so they can see things a little bit better. And then this TV back here, we haven't necessarily decided what size that's going to be, but it's going to be substantially larger than what it is. And so the hope will be that, you know, the board will be able to kind of look at that screen instead of having to turn around and keep on looking back behind you for, to see what's happening on the screen. So I know that Paul and the contractors have been up here taking a look at some things. We should be able to do these upgrades, I think, before the end of the year, and it shouldn't be any disruption to any of our meetings. And that's the intent. So, yeah, we're looking forward to having some new equipment.
What's the width of this screen, do you know?
I want to say it's 100 and something. So I had a big concern, you know, because it seems like we're going to go smaller. The fidelity, though, is so much better that, you know, people should be able to see it much more clearer, even if they're towards the rear of the room. But that's also one of the reasons why we are putting, you know, larger TVs up on the side.
I have a question for you, if I may.
Of course.
The TVs that we currently have here, there are meetings, and then there are not a lot, but we do have some that have overflow that's out in the hallway. And I was wondering if we could probably take one of those TVs that are not going to be utilized and maybe attach one out in the hallway so people could see it and type of deal.
We could potentially do that. We're actually going to be replacing also the one on the first floor. You know, when you walk in and you see that one, and we'll have like advertisements and things going, you know, when there's not a meeting in progress as well.
Like the town sign that we were going to do.
The electronic sign?
Electronic sign.
Yeah, it'll be electronic, Joe. And we'll put the seal on there. See? More than one way to skin a cat, my friend. Anyway, I think.
Is that, now, does that affect any of the equipment in the back, too? Are they going to be doing things there?
Yeah, that's going to get changed out as well, but that's the stuff that I don't understand. So, you know.
And as far as the budget for this, that comes under, like, is it our capital? Or like, what is that?
So if you recall, at town meeting, each year, we appropriate funds. So the cable is now a Cable Enterprise fund. And that change was made probably seven years ago. And if you also recall, over the last year, we've worked on an agreement with WACA that basically provides a little bit more, you know, in one way, provides a little bit more flexibility on how WACA can spend that money, but also provides, I think, a little bit more accountability as well for all parties involved.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Did we have to go out and do an RFP on these?
No, not since we have that agreement. No.
That's cool.
Yeah. That was the genesis of that year-long discussion for an agreement. It would have been quicker, probably, to go, that was for another piece of equipment. But, yeah. No, it all works out. And again, thanks to WACA, Paul, Barbara, John Fetherson, I know has been working on this. So many thanks. And to the board.
When is it happening?
Probably December. Merry Christmas, folks.
I was going to say, it probably won't be ready for our December meeting, but maybe for January?
Yeah, we'll start the new year right. And hi-def, Joe.
Hi-def.
Joe's lo-fi no more, so.
Right.
Okay, I almost got us to 7:15.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Actually, I did, according to my watch.
We're at 7:14. I think that's close enough. I think we're good.
By the time you read it.
By the time I read it. So the next item on our agenda is to open the tax classification hearing. So I'll read the legal notice from the Town of Ashland Select Board. In accordance with the requirements of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40, Section 56, the Select Board will hold a public hearing on fiscal 2025 property tax classification on Wednesday, November 6th, 2024, at 7:15 PM at the Town Hall, 101 Main Street, Ashland. The purpose of the public hearing is to consider the percentages, percentage, percentages, of the FY 2025 tax levy to be borne by each class of taxable real and personal property. Meeting information will be posted on the agenda, which can be found on the town website, www.AshlandMass.com. Persons wishing to be heard on this matter are invited to attend the public hearing in person or by logging into the Zoom meeting. Interested parties who are unable to attend the hearing may submit written comments to the Select Board's office, Town Hall, 101 Main Street, Ashland, Mass. 01721, or by emailing Susan Robey at sroby@ashlandmass.com. So could I get a motion to open the hearing? All those in favor of opening the hearing? Aye.
Does that have to be an individual?
No, because we're all here. So, yeah, I think we have to do a roll call if anyone is remote from our board.
Got you.
So with that, I'm going to pass that on over to Michael to introduce.
Nate, yeah, this is a new era, folks. Because I think everybody at this table, we have all, the only person we've ever seen give this presentation is Rich Ball. And of course, Rich retired earlier this year. But we're very, very fortunate to have, working with us, Nate Kramer, an experienced assessor who's been working with us since Rich retired, until we found a permanent replacement for Rich. And Nate, I've just been really, really impressed with his knowledge base. He's probably, he's going to have a different presentation than what you're used to and with a couple of new, a couple of new things for the board's information. And, yeah, I think, again, we're really, really fortunate to have somebody of his caliber, as well as really want to take the moment to thank the Board of Assessors. I think everybody's here. David's here. Steve's online. Chuck's hiding. Yeah, there he is. As well as June and Terry down in the office for stepping up during this time. So Nate, without further ado, I hope I didn't talk you up too much.
Probably did.
Okay, well, you've got a lot to live up to now, my friend.
So one thing I noticed, the presentation that you guys had up, I'm not sure, are there still yellow highlights on that presentation?
The one I have in our packet does still have yellow highlights.
Okay. So those have since been removed. I just sent, I realized it when I logged in and saw it, that, oh, no, they don't have the one without the highlights, but nothing really changed.
Nate, are you able to, are you able to share your screen? So it can?
Yep, I can. Basically, it's almost exactly the same, just, no highlights. Oh, it says, send request for sharing.
Yeah, we're working on that right now, Nate.
Why don't you introduce yourself a little bit, Nate?
Okay.
While we're waiting for, while we're waiting for that.
Nate, my name is Nate Kramer. I'm the owner of Municipal Finance Services LLC. I've been in the business for quite a while now. I was a, still am an appraiser for 15 years before going to work for the Department of Revenue, auditing tax assessors. I was there for six years and then went to work for a private company that city and towns outsourced their assessing offices to, and then went to work for a couple of different cities and towns, and now I own this company. We saw, we just saw a need. The assessing profession is just, it's every time somebody retires, there's nobody to replace that person. And I think when I started this in January of '21, there were, I think, 17 openings and no applicants. And that trend kind of continues. So I'm happy to provide these services as needed to different cities and towns when these situations happen and also, you know, help them, help them find a qualified person and also just hold the hand of a person if they think they have someone that might be good that might not necessarily be up to speed on everything. So. So with Ashland, Rich Ball retiring, I didn't know Rich. I know many, many assessors. I didn't know Rich, but I heard about him, heard he was a great guy. But Ashland, just like every other community that loses an assessor, it's not a fast process. It's very rare to get somebody right away.
Yeah. Nate, if you don't mind, just because I think we're working on some technical issues, but just to kind of interject here, what Nate is saying, it's actually starting to get to crisis levels. There just are not assessors, enough assessors to do the jobs. And Nate, we were just talking, I think, Western Mass, which depends on like a company to do, like Franklin County or certain, like through Fur Cog. I mean, that firm said that they were no longer going to be doing that for those communities. I mean, it is crisis level. So nobody wants to do the municipal work anymore. So.
I think, I think a big part of it is that a lot of these, a lot of people that are retiring came in, started their careers right around the time Prop 2 and 1/2 happened. Or, yeah, Prop 2 and 1/2, like in the early 80s. And obviously, nobody grows up saying, I want to be an assessor. So, you know, everyone just, you know, did their typical municipal 35, 40-year career, and nobody, very few people were coming up behind them. And it's not just, it's not just municipal assessors, but it's a lot of the contractors, too. Companies are selling, people are retiring, and I think it's just going to get worse and worse. I know of one company that's closing up at the end of this year, and they have 55 communities and nowhere to go, because the people that are still there are just stretched too thin. So another reason I put my hat in the ring.
Well, welcome. We're happy you're here. I think we are all set with the technology. So I think you can probably share your screen with the presentation, hopefully.
Can you see that?
Yes.
Yeah, and this is the one. Okay.
Yeah, if you can make it a little bit bigger. I don't know if that's you or if that's us. Yeah.
Oh, wait. There we go. Except it showed up on a different screen.
If it's causing issues, we all have it in front of us, too. So.
Okay. Well, why don't we just use the one you have? And the changes that are there, it's almost literally just, some things are highlighted in the one you have, and they're not highlighted in mine. They were just numbers I wanted to confirm before I presented, but very little changed. If anything did change, you know what? I'll just say the numbers. So if anything did change, or if you have a page that's highlighted, just let me know, and I'll confirm whether or not it changed.
Okay, perfect. All right.
So I'm going to, I'm going to not, I'm going to stop sharing then.
No, we want you to share. We definitely want, we definitely want you to share, because, so also, folks that are watching, because we have people that are logged on the Zoom, they'll be able to see the presentation as well. So we definitely want you to have the presentation. Oh, that's even, that's perfect. That's awesome. All right. We are, we are in business. Go, go right ahead.
Let me just make sure that changes when. Did that, did that?
It's still good.
Is it changing when I change it?
I don't see a change. We still see the top page.
Try the arrows, maybe?
Yeah, I'm changing it on my screen, though. That's the thing. Sorry about that. So let me see.
Oh, there we go. Now, now it's, now we're good.
So now we're, what is the purpose of this presentation? That's what we see.
All right. Now I just have to figure out how, there we go. Okay. Now I got it. All right. So I'm just controlling it from a different screen, technology. Okay, so welcome. This is Town of Ashland, fiscal '25 tax classification presentation. Fiscal twenty-five tax classification presentation. Um, the, this presentation is going to be a little bit different than what you're used to. Um, from what I understand, in the past, all you, um, were asked to decide on was whether or not to select a single tax rate or a split tax rate. Um, but these are the four things that are supposed to be voted on, on classification hearings. Now, I don't, I don't expect, um, uh, uh, there, there shouldn't be anything different. So I would think that, um, none of the answers will be a different, nothing that wasn't done in the past will affect anything. Um, this is just how it's supposed to be done. And as I go through it, I'll, um, uh, I'll explain anything that you want explained. Um, so, um, the purpose of the presentation is to select a single or split tax rate. Um, whether or not to adopt an open space discount, whether to adopt a residential exemption, and whether to adopt a small commercial exemption. Um, and if you have any questions on what these are, um, like I said, in the past, you've only done single or split tax rate. Um, I think you've only ever done a single or split, or a single rate. Um, and you've never, um, adopted any of the other three. So it's easy to just say no to those. If there's anything you guys want to explore, um, it's too late in the game to do that this year. Um, so we'll, we, but if it's something you want to explore for next year, um, I can certainly do studies and, and show you what those numbers look like. So before, um, I get into numbers and everybody's eyes glaze over, um, I'd just like to explain what's happening in the market. Um, despite high interest rates, there's still high demand. Um, high interest rates are contributing to low inventory because nobody wants to move and give up their low interest rates. Um, although rates now are starting to, um, to come down. These fiscal twenty-five values are based on sales that occurred in twenty twenty-three. So at that point, they were, uh, in the mid to upper sevens in many cases. Um, as shown on Slide five, sale prices seem to be stabilizing as we progress through calendar year twenty-four. And commercial industrial segments have been stabilizing and even seeing decreases over the past couple of years. Uh, this is a comparison of full and fair cash value for fiscal twenty-four versus fiscal twenty-five. Uh, so the residential and open space segments, um, are seeing a six point one percent increase. Um, commercial, industrial, and personal property are only going up two point seven percent, um, as noted, because those, those segments have just been struggling, uh, and over the past couple of years. Uh, and this, these, these other two lines here just show the makeup for the town. So, uh, for fiscal twenty-five, ninety-one point six of the town, ninety-one point six percent of the town is residential and eight point four percent is commercial. Um, uh, so it's a, you know, compared, it's pretty stable from last year. And then this, uh, total value, the last line, is just showing an overall increase for the whole town of five point nine percent. Which is probably much lower than you've seen the past couple of years, I'm assuming. Um, this is Slide five, and it's just, this is just single family data that I got off of MLS. Um, and it just shows what the market's done over the past five years. Now, the, this is, these are market sales, whether or not they're arms-length transactions or not. This is just every single family sale that's happened. Um, that's, that's been, uh, listed on MLS by brokers over the past five years. Um, so you can see from twenty to twenty-one to twenty-two to twenty-three, that's just significant increases. Um, and moving through twenty-four, so this calendar year twenty-four will be for fiscal twenty-six value. So we're seeing the residential values stabilize also.
Are those, is that the average, was the price?
These are average, um, uh, this is average list price in the top line.
Okay.
And this is sale price on the bottom line. So last year for, so for calendar year twenty-three, that year's done, obviously. So the, so the average sale price of a single family house in Ashland in twenty twenty-three was seven sixty-nine. Where now, we're mostly all the way through, um, twenty twenty-four. I believe I grabbed this snapshot sometime in October, um, and you can see there's a slight drop. I don't anticipate there being record sales in the past, in the last two months. It's, it tends to be kind of slow. After, once school starts and the holidays are coming, um, I would expect those numbers to pretty much remain the same.
If, if, Nate, if you don't mind, if I could just interject here as well, Randy.
Not at all.
So one thing I just really wanted the board to note, um, just what he has there at the top. So you know how I've said, like, you know, usually there's a couple of year lag time between, you know, what the, what you see in terms of the, the sales prices and what, when that gets reflected in the assessed values. So Nate's just kind of confirming that, you know, those F Y twenty-five values, um, are going to be based on the twenty-three sales. And, um, the ones that you see for twenty-four, we'll start seeing those in the, uh, tax year for, uh, twenty-six. Thanks, Nate. Sorry.
No problem. And, and I like just to, just to piggyback on that, I like to include this MLS data because this is showing actual sales, not assessed values. Um, and I think that's important when you're setting the values is in terms of assessed values, um, just to make sure you're not, uh, disjointed, um, which can happen. Um, if you look at anything long enough, it starts to make sense. So, um, we wouldn't expect our average assessed values for fiscal twenty-five to be, you know, nine hundred thousand if the market is showing the average single family sale was seven sixty-nine. So I, I like to add that in just to show that the assessed values are consistent with, um, with, with actual sales. Um, in a Massachusetts, uh, we're required to be at a hundred percent of market value. Uh, typically, we run at a median of ninety-five because if we, if we, we work with median. So if we had a median of a hundred percent, that would mean half the town is valued over a hundred percent. So we run it at ninety-five. Um, which kind of, w- with the hopes that it kind of maxes the town out at a hundred rather than having half the town overvalued.
Is this, um, is this broken out anywhere by, um, the, the house, the, uh, price range of the houses? Like, were there significantly more houses valued at six hundred and fifty and above versus four hundred to six hundreds, things like that, that, that are included?
I don't have that in, in this screenshot. Um, and the tool that I use to generate this report doesn't do that, but, um, I am able to get an Excel extract from the MLS to do that for sales and also compare it to assessed values.
I think that's helpful.
If, uh, if someone.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, the other thing is these are average sales and we work with medians. So, so there is a slight differential there, but, um, but they're typically pretty close. Um, so this, um, these are the average values for fiscal twenty-three versus fiscal twenty-four. Um, the average single family value, um, uh, for fiscal twenty-four was six seventy-four, seven ninety-nine, and the average value for, in twenty twenty-five is seven twenty-two eighty-one. Um, and if we go back to that slide, you can see the average market sale was seven sixty-nine. So the average assessed single family value is at seven twenty. It's about what we would expect to see, slightly below that a hundred percent mark. Um, the, the, uh, projected tax rate right now is eleven dollars and ninety-nine cents, which is over a dollar decrease, um, which also equates to a decrease in, um, the average single family house, uh, uh, tax bill. But this number could change slightly based on, uh, numbers that are entered after this presentation. I'm not sure if Brittany, um, the finance director has all of her numbers in yet or how that will, uh, play into where the tax rate goes. Um, but if it does change, it's typically, uh, in a, in a matter of cents, not, not dollars. So, you know, you, you might see twelve dollars and five cents or something like that. Um, and this is where the commercial, industrial, and personal property values fall, uh, fiscal twenty-four versus fiscal twenty-five. So you can just see that it's just a slight increase. Um, and, uh, I should add, this is just commercial, industrial, real estate. It does not include the personal property. And the reason I don't include personal property is because the five oh four, which are utility values, um, which are very large values versus the mom and pop type businesses, which to often have very small values can really tweak this number. So I just, I just leave them out. Um, and here is, um, this shows what a shift would look like if the town should at any point decide they want to shift. It doesn't look like, as far back as I can see, they never have, um, which keeps things very simple and I think, um, is, is not a bad idea in a town like Ashland that's, uh, you know, almost ninety-two percent residential. Um, to shift it would put more of the burden on the commercial, industrial properties and probably, uh, have an effect on new development in terms of commercial, industrial, and whether or not people. Um, so I, I highlighted this in bold, um, assuming that that's what the town would vote on, because that's what they've always voted on. Um, as seen here, back to twenty twenty-one, it's just always been a one, which is, which is no shift. Um, this is a comparison of surrounding communities and where they are. Um, you have a few around you, so Ash, that are, that also do not shift. So Ashland, Hopkinton, Holliston, and Southborough also do not shift. Um, it looks like Ashland is close to the bottom, um, in terms of their neighboring communities. I think only Framingham has a lower average single family tax bill. Um, and then significant increases, uh, once you get to Hopkinton, Holliston, and, uh, Southborough. And the last line here is just the state average. Um, so this includes, you know, Boston, all the way out to Hancock, every single intense, every single city and town in the state. Um, you know, there are towns out there that have, I think Gosnold has a two-dollar tax rate. Um, but, um, places like West Springfield, they, their residential rate might be in the twenties. Uh, they, they tend to be a lot higher out there, but this is just an overall average for the state. Um, and this is just a breakdown of, of, um, what the maximum allowable levy is for fiscal twenty-five in Ashland. The levy limit for twenty-four. Um, uh, you add the two and a half percent, which is what, um, uh, Prop two and a half allows you to do, and then you add in any new growth. So new growth would be, um, any new value that hasn't been taxed before. So a new house, a new building, um, you know, maybe something was exempt before that became taxable. Um, and this is what it is for fiscal twenty-five. So this is new money. Um, this three twenty-six, five eighty-five, and that's pretty consistent with what I've seen in the past. I, I went back a few years, um, to see where it's been, and it's, it's pretty consistent. Um, I think next year with the, uh, as, as the development at ninety to a hundred Chestnut Street, um, progresses, I would imagine next year's number is going to be significantly higher here. Um, so the fiscal twenty-four levy limit, uh, the debt exclusion, which I'm not sure what that is. I just saw it on Gateway. Um, and then here at the bottom is the maximum allowable levy for fiscal twenty-five. Um, and then that's it. Um, and like I said, these are just the four things that, that the town needs to, um, decide on. Um, so typically, they would choose a shit one. And in history, um, they have selected no on all of these other options. And I, I'm happy to explain what these are, um, if you'd like.
Okay. Well, great. Thank you so much, Nate. Um, I appreciate the presentation and, um, so just a couple of things that, that I was, um, just wanting to confirm. So for the, um, you know, the communities that you had presented and, you know, the, 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 um, you know, out of all the communities, only Framingham is the one that, that, that shifts. Um, and that's, that's because of the, um, amount of commercial that Framingham has in comparison to towns like Ashland and Southborough and Holliston, correct?
I would imagine so. So most, most larger communities do shift. Um, and yes, the purpose of that is to take some of the burden off of the residential taxpayers when they have a large commercial base.
Yeah, if I remember correctly from years past, um, I think Rich used to say that, you know, communities that have less than fifteen percent commercial tend not to, to shift because basically the, um, the, the increased burden that, that gets shifted to, to, um, to commercial is not kind of commensurate with what, what the, um, the offset would be to residential.
Correct.
So, um, so just that, and that's, that's generally what you, what you, what your opinion is as well?
Yes, crazy things happen. Um, you know, there are towns that have more residential than Ashland that have tried it. It just doesn't go over well, especially when a large portion of, of the, uh, the commercial makeup is probably smaller businesses that, you know, you're, when you, it's, it's not like, m- most of these are not large corporations that have deep pockets. So you're, um, you know, you risk pushing out a lot of small businesses if you, with this much residential, if you decide to shift it. And, um, you're allowed to go up to one point seven five. I think I saw the limit for, if they were, if, if Ashland all of a sudden decided, we want to shift as much as we can. I think they're only allowed to go one point five percent, um, because it's so predominantly residential. Um, but yeah, I, 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 I had never heard the rule of, that fifteen percent rule of thumb, but it's, it's not a bad idea. It's, it just wouldn't, uh, it wouldn't be a popular decision.
Right.
Especially with small businesses.
Okay. Thank you. Um, board, does the board have any questions?
Um, thank you very much for your presentation. Um, you know, one thing I think would be, you know, at some point, maybe when presenting to town meeting or that, would be to have a conversation about the types of services that vary between one community and another. Um, just when I look up here, I, you know, I know Southborough doesn't have, um, trash pickup, I don't believe. Right? So there's varying services. Um, and, you know, in our case, we're, you know, on the lower end and yet we have on the higher end of services, I believe. So, um, just interesting. And then, um, the only other thing I was thinking is to, to make it apples to apples, I, you know, I don't know if it would be useful, but it's, I just wonder what would Framingham's, if it wasn't the one point six nine shift, then what would it be?
What would their tax bill be?
Yeah.
If they didn't?
Yeah.
Um, so that's, that's fairly easy to calculate, right, Nate?
Yep, that can be done in Gateway. Um, I would just need their, uh, their levy limit.
Yeah, I, I just kind of sitting here thinking about that stuff, right?
Yeah.
So, but, uh, no, thank you very much.
You're right, though, and that's a good way to look at it, the services you provide versus what people pay versus what surrounding towns. I didn't realize, uh, Southborough didn't have things like trash pickup.
Yeah, and Holliston doesn't have sewer. Uh, it, there's, you know, there's.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's a good, it's a good, it's a great way to look at it. It really shows that it's a good value.
And we're actually doing a little bit more of a deeper comparison with that, with, um, the Collins Center study that we're doing. So, um, you know, so once that's, once that's completed, I think you'll see a, a little bit more meat on the, on the bones of that, uh, analysis. And, and the thing is, the way, because it is so in-depth, um, we won't necessarily have all of those communities, but, you know, we picked three, um, you know, at varying, let's just say, tax levels, one that's, you know, significantly more than Ashland, one that's similar to Ashland, and one that's significantly less. So you can see what kind of, you can start looking at value in terms of what services are provided versus, versus taxes.
I, I agree with Claudia. It, without that context, Michael, it's really hard, it's difficult to even analyze what's, what's happening here, I think, for most people. So I think that's very important.
Yeah. So Nate, um, so the first thing that they would need to vote on is whether or not they wanted to adopt a single rate, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And are we voting on that tonight or are we waiting to, because we, we don't close the, the hearing until after town meeting, correct?
That is correct. So, um, Nate, if I remember correctly, it was only a year ago. Um, but we, the board goes ahead and votes on that now. Is that correct? Or do we need to wait until after all the appropriations are done at town meeting?
To be honest, I, uh, it's, I think this might be. To be honest, I, uh, it's, I think this might be the first town I've done that is a, a town meeting town. Um, so I'm not sure how that works.
Okay, um, so I'd say, let's go ahead and, and have the board vote, um, tonight.
Okay.
Uh, you do need to keep it open until, until, uh, after town meeting, and then you can close it, and if you need to take the vote again.
We'll do that, okay.
No harm, no foul.
Um, and as far as the other action items that's on the list, because we haven't, we haven't. Explored all this.
No.
Before.
No.
I mean, I know that. It's something that we probably should take a look at, if, but if we can't, if we can't take any action on it, this, for this town meeting anyway. Like, I, but I would love to be able to, like, have a conversation about what that all is.
Yeah, Nate and I actually talked about that earlier today, um, and just, I think he's gonna do. Uh, an exercise, especially with the residential exemption, because I think that's. Probably the one that, you know, when you start reading what a residential exemption is, is probably gonna catch your eye. Um, and so he's just gonna look at doing that exercise as well.
Okay, all right, so we can wait to do, we can wait to do that, does the board feel okay with that? Okay, okay. All right, so, um, so what we'll do is we'll take a vote, and then, um. So I would say that, um. Unless the board has any other questions for, for Nate.
I appreciate the presentation, Nate, thank you.
Okay.
Welcome.
All right, so while Yolanda still gets settled.
Yeah, keep going.
Um, could I get a motion to approve a single tax rate for FY twenty twenty-five? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, so it looks like we've approved the single tax rate for this upcoming year, we'll keep the hearing open. And then we'll close it after town meeting.
Correct, and I think, and we'll have to bring these information to.
Correct, and I think, um, so our meeting in December is scheduled for December seventh, is that correct, Susan?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The next meeting is the fourth, December fourth.
The fourth, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. So we'll go ahead and finish, finish, close that out then, okay, all right. Um, unless the board has any other questions, I, I also wanna just thank the, the Board of Assessors. Um, David and Chuck and, um, and Steve that are online, did, did anyone have any? Other additional comments? I wanna give you guys a chance to, to say something if you guys wanted to add anything to this.
I, I think it is gonna gain a look at these other exemptions as you are going to do.
Okay.
And see what we do for next year.
All right, thank you.
I think it's fine.
Chuck, go ahead, Chuck.
I, I just said, I think it's, I think his presentation is great, I'm completely with it.
All right, great, thank you, Chuck. Okay, I guess we'll be, um, moving on our agenda, thank you so much, Nate, for joining us tonight.
Thanks, Nate.
It was great to meet you, and.
You're welcome.
And, and we appreciate all the work that you're doing for, for our community right now, so thank you.
No problem at all, it's a great team to work with.
Good.
Randy, can I just ask Michael a question and Jen about the, the study that's being done, the Collins?
Mm-hmm.
What, what exactly is that?
So it's the staffing study, yeah, what we've referred to as the staffing study.
Oh, okay.
We asked them to, we just asked them to do a little bit of a deeper dive, so they use metrics that, that we had. And we're asking them to do a little bit of deeper dive, so that we could do a little bit more of that kinda comparison to give some context to some of the stats that we often use.
The other thing I think that might be useful in, in these conversations, when we're looking at the tax rate of the other communities, that too would be then also to include. Like, some home values.
Mm-hmm.
You know, related to, just, uh, it, I think it just helps to give you a better sense, right? Of the whole picture of, of, um.
Yeah, home values, in, in what context, do you think?
Uh, well, in, just in terms of, you know, what, what the home value is to begin with, and therefore. How it might impact the tax rate, right? And then just where. What the correlation is between the tax rate and the, so the three, the three players, really, I guess, the, the tax rate. Um, the home values, um, and the services, the, the amount of.
Yeah, the expenditures.
Yeah.
Essentially, yeah, cuz that's, that's what goes into the algorithm, if you will, the calculation.
Right.
Because really, your tax rate is your function of your expenditures and the assessed value.
Right.
Right, so, um.
But, it would be, it's good to look at it in, like, real. Numbers or, I don't know, I just feel like those three categories, to look at it in terms of real, the housing market, whatever. And then the services, the specific, more specifically, right? Yeah, yeah, like we said, we, it, there's so many more services perhaps in the town of Ashland than there are in some of those other communities with a higher tax rate.
Correct.
So.
There's a great tool on the Department of Revenue website called the Community Comparison Report. And you, you, you select criteria, you select your own criteria, demographics or, or whatever it may be. Um, so you select the towns based on what, by, based on, maybe it's population or land area or. Um, average single-family value and stuff like that, and, and it really hones down on. Who really is more similar than you, unfortunately, it doesn't include what services they get, because that would just be. That would be information probably too hard to maintain, because those things change year by year, you know?
It's not an apples to apples.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Your best bet on that stuff is not necessarily looking at the revenue side, but it's actually on the expenditures, so.
Okay, some more to come on that. All right, thank you so much, Nate, I know you've been sharing your screen, you can, you can stop sharing your screen and, and, uh. We will see you soon, thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
Nice meeting you.
Handing it over to Ms. Yolanda, who is, who has, uh, joined us in time?
Thank you, uh, Brandy, for taking over the meeting, I apologize for being late, um. I'm learning quickly, you can't be in two places at one time, and I had a meeting that I had, that I had to do. Because of something else I'm doing, so thank you very much. Moving forward, we have a presentation, uh, update on the Village Burial Ground. And I believe we have Helen, who's gonna do that for us, and Joan. So, uh, this is just an update, you guys have done some great work, so Helen, I'm gonna pass it over to you.
Hi, yeah, um, so I have a presentation here, I'm not sure how we get it, I, I sent it to Susan, Jen, are, are you able to put it up?
No, I think you should, um, we probably could just make you co-host, but I can, I don't have it, but. Um, Susan, can you make Helen co-host, so that she can share her screen? You should be all set, Helen, you should be able to share now.
Okay, it's up, can you see it?
No, you just, so just go to share at the bottom of the screen, it's a, in, in the meeting, you have to hit share.
Okay, wait a second, I might, I have this presentation up, I can't see share, okay, share, I see it, all right. So, screen. And then, let me find the presentation, and that's, okay.
There you go, wonderful.
All right, so, yeah, I wanna, I wanna thank you all for having me tonight, uh, to give this, uh, update, we, uh, we. Decided, you know, that it would be a good time now, since we've really had a lot of events, and we've had, um. A lot of work that's been done, that, down at the site of the Village, uh, Burial Ground, that it would be a good time to do an update. And let everyone know, uh, what's been happening down there, uh, so that's what this is, and so. Go to the next screen, so I, I did a little bit of, uh, back, I think we had covered this before, but just to kinda reiterate. Everything that's been done since the spring, so on our original, uh, cleanup day, we. The, with the original condition of the headstones were covered in mold and lichen, very few headstones were visible, readable. Uh, they were buried missing, many headstones were broken, off the base, cracked and improperly repaired from, uh, previous, uh, work someone had done, and. Many headstones were completely broken and required, uh, professional, uh, and require, do require, uh, professional restoration still. The back sections of the cemetery were completely overgrown with brush and invasive plants. And there was a large, uh, dead tree in the cemetery, which has been removed by the DPW. Uh, we have hundreds of hours of volunteer work, which is so wonderful, um, you know, that we have so much community support and involvement. Um, our community cleanup and volunteer training day, the Historical Commission Historic Society Cemetery Working Group, we had thirty-six volunteers. That participated along with our conservators from TNT Gravestone Solutions, and there was a total of two hundred and fifty combined total volunteer hours. And, uh, during that event, we had cleaning of the headstones using, uh, D-two, uh, to clean the headstones, which is a biologic solution. And, uh, they used, uh, brushes to clean off the stones. Able-bodied volunteers were trained to pallet, reset, level and do light repairs of headstones. We had volunteers trained by Kathy Rooney to move, remove invasive plants, uh, cutting small trees and down limbs, uh, for removal. And volunteers moved, cut brush to a designated location where the DPW came and removed it on, on a number of our events. And the DPW also delivered water, gravel and gravel for the repairs and disposed of the brush and limbs. So that was over several, uh, cleanup days, and we really do want to thank Doug Small, Chris Messier and Kevin Langmeyer from the DPW. Because a lot of the, um, needed assistance that we got from them, uh, made all of this really possible. Uh, the DPW also had a large dead tree in the, pretty much in the center of the site, uh, removed. Uh, which was not only an eyesore, but it was really sort of dangerous, so it was nice that that got removed. Um, we have a cemetery, uh, sub-working group that does repairs, we call them our labor working group, and, uh. There's a total of six participating volunteers right now, and we plan to add additional volunteers over time. Um, and the volun- total volunteers for that, uh, that group is eighty-six hours. Our cemetery, um, let's see, nope, sorry, that's the same, uh. Oh, and I wanted to, uh, make note that all of the palleted headstones, if you take a walk down there, you will see pallets with headstones on them. Uh, those had to be dug up and awaiting repair, and that's why they're on those pallets, is basically to kinda keep them from being further damaged, especially by. Uh, lawnmowers and weed whackers, uh, so when work is going on in the, in, in the area, they're not being, you know, further damaged. Many of the standing headstones were also buried and had to be dug up, those headstones have already been repaired and reattached at the bases and leveled. We had a, an event, uh, with a high school community service day, we had twenty fi- uh, twenty-one volunteers participating with a combined. Total number of fifty-four hours. We had a Boy Scout Community Service Day, which I'll explain a little bit more about in a bit. Um, and that was also a Civil War recognition and flag ceremony, that had a total of twenty-nine volunteers with a combined number of a hundred and five. Uh, volunteer hours, and so right now, I, I have, um, the total number of volunteers so far is a hundred and fourteen with a total. Combined volunteer hours, including all events and organization at eight sixty-seven, that is actua- that's eight hundred and sixty-seven hours, that actually is a little bit low. Um, I've been trying to get more information, um, there's a lot of it I have to go through, and, and we haven't got that completed yet, but I also have an additional sixty-four hours. From our research and documentation group, um, because they're also doing ongoing work, and I have to add that. Um, I, I had, we, we had to put this together pretty quick, uh, so that got left out, so I just wanted to kinda add that in, so that number's a bit low, and it may even. Still be a bit more than what I've got here. And now we've got some, we've got some pictures of, this was the training day in, in June, and this is our conservator TNT was teaching our, our labor group. Uh, skills, uh, that they now are using, and are really doing a lot of good work down at the site. Doing leveling, small repairs of the gravestones, and, um, that's kind of going on an ongoing basis when they. Have time, so they'll just arrange with each other to go and meet down there, and, and, you know, they may go down and do, uh, seven or nine headstones or two, or whatever they have time for. So we've, uh, we've got a really nice group of people that are doing that in their free time, and we really appreciate that. And then the High School Community Service Day, uh, this is just some pictures from that day, we had a. Three different groups of high school students that came in for two-hour shifts. And, uh, did a lot of brush cleanup work, which we also really appreciated. Then, um, recently, we had a Boy Scout troop, uh, Community Service Day, uh, and Civil War Veteran Rec- Recognition, uh, Day as well. Uh, with the Boy Scouts, which was really a nice event, and, uh, twenty-nine Boy Scouts and their leaders and working group members participated. Uh, major brush and, uh, leaf cleanup of the back areas was done, they documented headstone information, including names, dates, and. Condition of the, uh, stones, the size of the stones, the locations, materials used for the headstones and, and needed repairs. So another thing that we're doing, and we have our documentation team doing, is. Filling out a form that, uh, one of our team members, uh, made, uh, just specifically for this, so when work needs to be done, or. Or when they're documenting anything about each headstone, there's gonna be, um, before and after information for each. For each headstone, and eventually, when all of this repair work is completed, um, we will have that. Record for the future, which is something we hope to, um, really, uh, have housed in the, um, in the vault at Town Hall. Uh, because that would be nice, so that in the future, anyone who wants information, so. They can go there and look, and, and there it is, and they'll be able to find out what was done and, and how it was done, and. All of the information they might be looking for. So the Boy Scouts, while they were there, learned historic and interesting factual details about the people buried in the cemetery, which was. Really interesting, because they really enjoyed that, you have to have seen them, the way they kind of. Intermingled with each other, discussing the details of these things, to know that. It was really something that they enjoyed and that they really picked up on, that they were learning something, because they were talking about, you know, a lot of people had. Jaws back then as, as, uh, shoemakers, or they died of consumption, and these aren't things we talk about a lot today, so they were discussing it, and so you know they really learned. Uh, something and became engaged in, in that whole, uh, process, and, and it was really nice, and then each Boy Scout. Read a paragraph of the history of each Civil War veteran, as the flags and military service medallions were being placed at each of the grave sites. So, uh, that was another way that they were able to pick up on a lot of that information as well, um, and it was, uh, just a very. Nice and, uh, you know, it, it was a very good recognition for the Civil War veterans who hadn't been recognized in. I don't know how long, but a very long time. Um, and there are two additional Civil War veterans graves that need to be found, we know that they should be there, and we're hoping to locate those in the near future. So by all measures, that day was an incredible success. And there's some pictures of the Boy Scouts and their leaders all down at the cemetery site, um, we have a group picture and some pictures of them. Uh, doing the work, uh, down there, and then we also have pictures of the flag ceremony, and the boy, you can see the boys reading and. Uh, placing flags, so that, that was just a heartwarming thing, I have to tell you, it was really, it was truly nice to be able to participate and see all that. Um, so that was, that was nice for our members and for them as well. So common progress, um, at the site, uh, the cemetery has had an amazing transfer, uh, transformation, if you've been down there, you can, you can see. All the visible headstones were clean and many can now be read, which is really, which is really an amazing transformation, because I know when I first went down there. Couldn't read a lot of those headstones, couldn't read many of them, in fact, and now most of them can be read. Um, all unrepaired and unsecured headstones have been palleted, I explained that earlier. Uh, thirteen headstones were repaired on the volunteer tr- training day, nine additional, uh, since, by the wor- the labor working group. Uh, many previously buried headstones have been found, and we're still looking for more, we know there's more in the back section, which. Just recently got cleared of all the poison ivy, so it was a little bit tough for us to have people going, oh, the, over the summer was a little tough anyway, cuz it was really hot. But we also have that area that still needed to have the poison ivy removed, so we didn't wanna send people into areas until poison ivy was removed, so that area. Uh, recently, uh, was, it was removed, and people have, uh, gone in there and started cleaning that area, and we hope to find more headstones down there. And then, um, we are currently, uh, and I explained this earlier, documenting all the before and after information for each headstone. Uh, to keep a, you know, to keep an ongoing record and to, to finally have a, a completed record at the end of the whole process. William Bell's relatives, uh, wanted to know if his grave had been accounted, now this was someone who was down there. That we found and uncovered their, their headstone, had been completely buried. And we had found it, and their, their relative wanted to know if, if that headstone was there, and it was during one of our brush cleanup events, and we were very excited to let them know. Stone had been uncovered, and so, uh, community engagement and volunteerism has been extraordinary, and we've been very. Very happy about that, that was the model we really hoped to predominantly use, um, eventually. Eventually, we will move to professional restoration when we have to. But right now, we're sticking with this, because it's working really well for us. So this is some of the labor, ongoing volunteer work that's going down, on down at the Village Burial Ground. And you can see some of the members of our, of our labor working group down here, working on the headstones. And they're basically uncovering a lot of the bases too. So even if the headstone is, say, out of the ground or partially out of the ground, a lot of times the bases are buried under the ground. They, these things sink, I guess, about, I think it was six inches every hundred years. But anyway, they've been digging up the, the bases and trying to put them back together with the headstones, and, and they've been doing a great job. And you can even see here, just if you notice from that first picture, I showed the difference in these headstones and the coloring. They're, they're, you know, they're very clean, and they're very nice looking. And you can read them, which is, which is really wonderful. And so our next steps, we expect, but we still expect, I should say, this to take between two and three years to complete. We're continuing with the volunteerism and community involvement model until we get the headstones that require professional restoration. And then we will go to get a survey and assess the costs at that point. The community volunteer events will continue. That's valuable work, and we, and we really appreciate that work and, and involving the community. The cemetery working labor group will continue with the small repairs and leveling on an ongoing basis until all their work is completed. The cemetery working group documentation team will continue documenting and researching gravestone information, location and condition, both before and after, until all of the gravestones have been completed. And that information, as I said, will be housed, housed at the vault at Town Hall when it's completed for future reference and interest. We also hope to find and document those last two Civil War veterans' heads, gravestones. And we want to eventually install two historic kiosks with a map of the site and historical information. We're currently discussing if the sign that says Ashland Cemetery should be replaced with a sign that reads Village Burial Ground, the correct name of the site. We also plan to install some signs that say dogs are not allowed on the site, since that seems to have become an issue. And we also would like to eventually, more towards the end of the project, plant a four-inch border of low-growing grasses around each headstone to minimize damage from lawn mowers and weed whackers. Because when they get close to those headstones, they do create damage. And we have noticed some additional damage since this restoration project started. So we really want to, we want that as part of the project to minimize that damage. And we think that's an important thing. And then we plan to install native plantings near the river. And our future plans for funding are to use the current funds that we have in the Historical Commission's account. Then the funds raised through grants, if we can get them, and fundraising, future fundraising. And we will eventually apply for CPC, CPA funding, as, as funds allow. I'm sorry, okay. So, and I just got a couple more things. And then we hope to get eventually, if we can, if, if funding allows, get ground-penetrating radar to get an accurate account of the number of remains interred at the Village Burial Ground. The professional restoration of the gravestones will be completed after the survey and bidding requirements are implemented. And we are currently planning a Civil War service at the Village Burial Ground for spring 2025. That will likely be in April. We hope that you are as excited at our, as, at our progress and everything we've achieved. And this has been a very real labor of love. So do you have any questions?
Any questions from the committee, Joe?
I have one, thank you. Helen, thank you, and your, and your committee and all the volunteers that, that have done the job to restore that location. Are there actual numbers as to the number of burial in that, in that location?
There's not an accurate number. We know there's over two-hundred gravestones. And I do have the number written down somewhere, but I'm not sure, I know exactly where that is right now. But I know it's over two-hundred. But we know there's more people buried down there than we have gravestones, because some of the gravestones are buried, some of them are missing. And also because some of them were moved. And we're not sure, of, of the headstones that were moved to Wildwood when Wildwood first opened, we're not sure how many of the bodies went. Then there's also the fact that a lot of times, people, if they didn't have money, would be buried without a headstone. So that's why we'd like to get the GPS, the ground-penetrating radar, to get an accurate account of how many people are actually in, in the site itself. And that's something we would like to do. It's a little expensive, but we do hope to eventually be able to do that.
And one last question, if you don't mind, Madam Chair. With respect to all the work that you've done, are there future plans to add protective barriers so individuals don't come in the fencing area or make sure that we don't have people running through and, you know, knocking things down that you've so taken care of nicely?
You know, the thing is, one, aside from it being very expensive, there are stone walls around it. You know, I, I know the stone walls don't completely keep people from coming in, especially because there are a couple of openings. I mean, we could maybe even talk about gating the openings, but we don't want to keep everybody out, because we want people to be able to go in and visit as a somewhat of a nice, you know, historic destination. The thing that I would be the most concerned about more so would be maybe kids going in and playing and damaging headstones. And we have a sort of conversation going about that right now. We haven't made any decisions on that. But fencing is very expensive. And as I said, we have to kind of go through all of these other things first before we could even begin to think about that. So we haven't really discussed that. But I know, as I said, there is, there is barriers. I mean, there's, there are stone walls, and on, on the backside, there is the river. So they're not going to come through the river. They could come over the fence, the stone wall, but you could come over a fence too. So, and then you have just the two openings. So maybe we would talk about that in the future, you know, maybe dealing with those openings. I don't know. That, that's something that the working group will have to address.
Thank you.
Yep.
Makita?
Hi Helen, just wanted a, a comment and a question. First off, I just wanted to, to thank you, the committee, all the volunteers. This has been such an incredible community project. I, I, I had the opportunity to get out there and volunteer a couple of times with the Labor Committee, with the Labor folks. And I just, I'm so impressed by the dedication, the focus, the meticulousness of all the volunteers and the caring. It's just, it's, it's truly amazing to see the community come together to preserve our history this way. So I wanted to thank you for all of your efforts and all of the volunteers and all the folks who are ma, making this possible. First off, insofar as keeping folks out of the property, you know, I think we, we have talked about the concern about kids playing. It's not even, I, I think there's a double concern there, not so much, actually, in addition to kids, you know, possibly damaging those headstones, there's also the possibility of the kids getting hurt in a real, in a significant way. I mean, you know, so with all the, the repair work going on and, and such. So I think there, there is a need for, to take a look at, you know, who, who can, who and how can pass through in a constructive way. The, the other, I have a question for you about the headstones, specifically the footstones. So we've been talking about the headstones quite a bit, but there's also been a lot of footstones around. Is there a concerted effort to try to preserve that as well? Or what's the significance of those footstones in relation to the headstones?
Yeah, so when there is a footstone, sure, they, that would have already been cleaned, because they cleaned everything down there. If it needed a, you know, a leveling or some kind of repair, that would also be looked at. Not, and, and it may just be that not every gravesite got a footstone, but I know there are some. I, I don't have an accounting for how many there are. And there may, there may again be things down there that we don't know about, because they could be buried, or they could have disappeared over time. And that's something we wouldn't be able to get the information on. But as they find them, and sure, they would address the footstones. Any, any part of the site that, you know, would exist from the headstone to the footstone would be, would be repaired or, or cleaned as needed.
Thanks. What do you think?
Yeah, you know, I, I too just wanted to thank you, Helen, and, and your group. It really has been an amazing project. And to see these pictures and how far it's come, really very impressive. And, and I was also, I was wondering, so if a person wanted to go in instead of come out,
Make, you don't want to come out? I'm not sure what you're saying.
Where, where is, where is the best access?
Okay, so there is, there's two entrances. So there is one directly behind the Federated Church. So if you walk along the parking lot next to the Federated Church and take your right, you're going to see the, the stone wall, and there's a break in the stone wall right there. That's the main entrance that we've been using. There's another side entrance on the right-hand side of the, the cemetery, on the wall on the far-right side, and that also has a break. I know the DPW uses that entrance to come in. But I believe that's also private property over there, and there's some agreement to let DPW use it. So I don't know that, like, parking there is really as accessible as that first entrance. I would go in through the back of the Federated Church. Yeah.
Yeah, and it, it does have an interesting history. And it's really coming up on two-hundred years old in, in 2028, right?
Yes, it is.
You know, really interesting. I don't know, people who may have not gone into cemeteries much, it's pretty interesting sometimes to go in and have an opportunity to look at, you know, the dates. And often, there might be a few words that are engraved about the person or what they died from, or, you know, a variety of information. It's interesting to look at how old they were in those days, particularly at, at death. And just, just they're, they're much more interesting, I think, than, than you realize until you go in. And, and then, of course, there's always nothing like a good stone rubbing too, so.
Actually, I kind of heard that stone rubbing is a little bit detrimental to the.
I was just going to say, it's probably not really good for the.
Yeah, I don't think it is, but you are right. It, it, it's just really a lot of interesting, interesting information just walking around and reading those stones. And you get kind of a picture of, like, just a lot of people died very young back then. You know, they were buried next to, you know, who was who. And you see a lot of, because you're, you're an Ashland resident, and you've been here long enough, and you know names. So you do see a lot of old Ashland names in there. So it, it is, it's a really interesting historical place to go. And it's kind of nice and quiet and peaceful too. It's, it's a nice place.
Yeah, yeah. Funny thing, how that works. All right, well, thank, thank you really very much. It, it really does look great.
All right, thank you. Madam Chair?
So thank you so much, Helen, and, and the team for, for all the work. I, I was so impressed with just the number of sheer hours and people that you've, that you've literally motivated to, to, to be a part of this project.
Took time to keep track of. I mean, your data is really good, yeah.
And, 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 you know, we know how hard it is to like, it's kind of like herding cats sometimes to get volunteers to, to, to commit and show up and continuously show up. So just kudos to you for, for the efforts around all of that, because it's, it's, it's a huge effort. So, so thank you for, for that and for the committee that's been. And Kate Jersick is also here, and I know she's been very involved in that as well. But I had a couple of questions. One, you know, as we were talking about sort of this, like, under-construction, current state of it, I was wondering if it made sense to, like, put up some sort of temporary sign or anything about, like, just like a caution, you know, just, I'm, I'm just throwing that out there because, just, just so people don't get hurt, like, or we, I don't know, I'm just.
Well, no, I mean, I, I, I hear what you're saying. I think, I think that makes sense, just of, you know, people either don't get, people use a little bit more caution when they're walking around the site, just to, not to damage all the work that the volunteers have done, but also just to make sure that they're being careful as well. I, I, if possible.
Yeah, just sort of like, you know, just, you know, caution under construction or something, just.
Something like that, yeah.
Something. But that was my, that was my first, first question. And then the other thing, I know you had mentioned CPC funding as a, as an option to, you know, I know it's more kind of like longer term, because you still have funds left, which I assume the funds are probably going to go towards, you know, this, this upcoming spring and summer from a timeframe standpoint. Like, what are your thoughts about, like, timing for, for CPA funds?
Well, I think that we're gonna, so we, we had a meeting last week. And we're planning on having another meeting, I believe, in a month or so before everybody gets, you know, into the winter, to do all of our next steps. And I think our timeline right now is a little bit fluid in that we want to be able to really utilize the volunteers and utilize the community service and keep people excited about it. Because, one, it's, it's a really nice project for the community to, to be involved in. But also, because I think when we go for that funding, it's nice to have community support. So that would be very helpful. But I, I believe as soon as we find what we believe will be all the stones we're going to find down there, because we kind of want to have all the stones visible. And we know there's more back there. Because once we have an accounting of everything, we could get a more accurate assessment of what needs to be done and what our volunteers can do and what they can't. And that's when we'll start talking about the survey and then going for CPC funding. So it is a little fluid. So, and I know there's all kinds of, you know, dates, and you have to have things in by certain times to be able to get them for, you know, the next. So we're not as concerned with that right now this year, because we really have to look at next year first. We had kind of thought that might be the thing we were doing right now. But once we kind of got into this and we really realized that, one, I think our volunteers are actually going to be able to do more work down there than we had originally conceived. And so that's a nice thing, because that saves us a lot of money. And it's, and it's a way for people to be involved in the community. And it's a way to restore part of the community with, within the community, which is, I think, nicer than actually having to pay someone. But there are stones down there that are beyond our labor group's capability and will require it. But we'll, we'll get that after we get the total number of stones located and assessed from our perspective as to what we can and can't accomplish. And then we'll be able to, to get the survey, which I'm kind of thinking is going to be next year. And then we'll go for the CPC funding either next year, if we have it in time, or, or the following. Like I said, it's a two-to-three year, and it's a little bit fluid right now, just because we are kind of going at this slower pace now than we had originally planned, because we are really having a lot of success, you know, using, using our, our volunteers and getting work done that way. Oh, and also, as far as the sign to put down there, you know, that's something that I will also bring up with the Cemetery Committee. I don't have any, I don't think anyone would have a problem with that. I just have to discuss that with them and, and make a plan getting something down there. I don't think that should be a problem either.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, and I'm, I'm really glad to be able to come and present this tonight. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Helen. I think the rest of the board has covered any potential questions. If I have anything else, I will reach out. But I too want to thank you and your committee. And certainly, as we, as we see here in Ashland, when volunteers come together, amazing things can happen. And you have shown that that is truly the case with this project. So thank you for leading it. Thank you for keeping those volunteers engaged. And we look forward to seeing what else gets accomplished in this space.
Thank you. Madam Chair, if I could just say one thing, this is Joan Confrati.
Sure, go ahead, Joan. Very quickly, because we have some people waiting that we'd like to get in as well.
Right. I just want to thank Helen. She has done yoga's work, and I hope that, that, that gets, gets recognized in the town, that without her, this project would not be going on. Thank you so much.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Joan also does a lot. We are actually co, we're co-managing this project, so Joan does a lot too. So thank you.
Great, okay. Wonderful. Rick, Peter? We are ready. We are going to have a presentation. I don't know if they heard me. Our next item on our agenda is a presentation on update. And we're a little bit late, we apologize. Thank you for your patience. Sometimes things take longer than you plan. As I said, the next item on our agenda is an update on the regional YMCA that is coming here to Ashland. People are very excited about it. And I'm going to invite the three of you up and take us through this presentation. I think Jen is pulling it up for you on that computer. And you have to start, Rick, come on. For those who don't know, you just introduce yourselves and then go through it. We're excited. I think the community is excited to get the update as well.
Good evening.
Evening.
Folks, it's really great to be here.
Folks, it's really great to be here. We all know it's, um, this project has been like in the pipeline for some time now, you know? And uh it's just so exciting to be to the point now where we're making really good progress.
So real quick, just introduce who you are.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Because we all know, but some people watching may not.
I'm sorry. My name's Rick McPherson. I'm President, CEO of the Metro West YMCA. Right, so um if you take a quick look back before I introduce Peter, it was back in 2019 that with the town of Ashland, we were um able to secure the land that this new Regional YMCA is going to be on in Ashland. So that was 2019 and as the ball was starting to get rolling, COVID hit, right? And everything, you know, turned into crisis management for all of us, right? And so um 2020, 2021 was all about just responding to community needs while keeping the, the flame burning for the new Regional Y and doing work behind the scenes. And so once we, you know, hit 2022, things started rolling along pretty nicely. And so we're here tonight to give you an update on just where we stand. And so I would like to introduce Peter Weisgerber, who's our Chief Development Officer, to kinda get us started. Then I'll, I'll be back.
Thanks, Rick. Um, so as Rick said, I'm Peter Weisgerber. I'm the Chief Development Officer and a proud Ashland resident. So very excited about, about this project. Um, but a year and a half ago, uh we had come back to the project. We went out, we redid the feasibility study, we redid market studies, really trying to get a sense of what the community was looking for in a new Regional Y. So we did a phase called Listen, Learn, and Dream. And we received about 2,000 surveys from folks in Ashland, Hopkinton, Holliston, Sherburne, even parts of, of South Framingham. Because this will truly be a, a Regional Y. And what it came back as is yes, there's still excitement. There's still a need for a facility. And then there were a couple of things that were a little different on this side of the, the pandemic. One was that the community was really asking for a place that would bring people together from all walks of life, that would unify the community, that would unify the region. The other thing was the mental health crisis for our children that we are facing. And we continue to see it today with kids in our childcare programs, our early learning programs, after-school care programs, summer camps. And there really is a, a need now to address that. Our staff go through what we call trauma-informed care training. Because of kids coming off of that tough couple of years are still facing those challenges today. Challenges of socialization, challenges of getting back in the classroom. So as we work to try to protect the opportunity for all kids to, to learn, this really became an opportunity to look at the facility in some different ways. So about a year and a half ago, we said, okay, it's time to come back um together again. Do you not see? Jen, can you just look at this real quick?
So I think you just have to do it with this instead of that.
So which one?
So you have to do it with the arrows.
Okay.
I don't really, yeah, you should be able to do it that way.
Alright.
Get these two arrows back and forth. Yep. So then it's working.
Okay. My apologies. Uh, so about a year and a half ago, um, we decided it was time to bring our leadership cabinet together. Um, we recruited a group of about 20 volunteers from each of the towns. We tried to get um a diverse group of folks. Uh, we recruited two amazing leaders, Tom Karen, who many of you may know from Nesson Sports, the Red Sox, uh Vizi Tilak, who I think a lot of you know from Ashland. Uh, two fantastic, passionate, compassionate volunteers who then worked to bring a group of 20 folks together, including our very own Yolanda, Steve Greenberg from Ashland, Amy Turncliff from Ashland as well. And those folks really started to look at building a group of folks who cared about this project. We knew if we were gonna kick off a fundraising campaign that folks don't give, because they have capacity, folks give because they care. So our job over the last year and a half was to find out who out there cares about this project. About that time, we had been working with MathWorks out of NADAC and they stepped up with a lead gift of $2.5 million to really kick things off, uh which was exciting. So at that time, we had our Marathon Community Breakfast, an event we hold each year. And we announced that lead gift from MathWorks. Fast forward to this past year's Marathon Community Breakfast and we were able to announce uh federal HUD funding in the amount of $5 million. That was directed towards the Early Learning Center component of this project, which is very exciting to actually know we're going to have an Early Learning Center, a Childcare Center uh as part of, of this. We were also able to announce at that event that we will be naming this facility in honor of and in memory of the Hoyt family. Rick and Dick Hoyt were very involved with our YMCA. They had helped us each year. They were our first Inspiration Award honorees and helped us decide who we were honoring each year. Rick had some very specific ideas about the, the facility. I think he wanted 15 pools or. But uh, but he cared about this. Dick cared about this. And now Rick's brother Russ is still very involved with our Y. And it means the world to them that we'll be able to name a facility on the Boston Marathon route in honor and memory of the, the Hoyt family. Just a few months ago, we were also able to announce that uh we received state funding of $500,000 uh thanks to our incredible Metro West Legislative Delegation that we have and the State Senate President. And a little bit of a sneak preview. But on Tuesday, November 19th, at our Dream Big Auction, we'll be announcing a very special announcement of a gift that, that we received of, of a million dollars. So that's really exciting. What that all means is that the first $10 million of this project is now behind us. So as we start to shift towards the next 10 million, really looking at, okay, what are those resources in the community that we can go to? Gifts of that level, as we're looking at the top of the pyramid, they take a lot of time. And we talked here about a number of projects that, that take time to get done. So the passion of our volunteers, the involvement, the time, talent, dedication really means the world to us and folks staying with us and trusting the process to get to that first $10 million. As we go and we look forward, we've submitted requests, and you can see here on the screen, to, to a number of foundations, corporations, we're also working with our Leadership Cabinet and our Board of Directors as we um shift towards this next $10 million. So you can kinda see that the timeframe here, it's been a journey for all of us, but we're excited. We're making progress. We now see a path forward. And with the momentum we have continuing that progress, we have an opportunity, if things continue as they're going, to break ground in 2025, which now doesn't seem that far away, does it? Yeah, that's a good point. Two months. That's really close. So at the same time, one of the things I was trying to say to, to our staff is sometimes you see, see a duck on the water and it feels like things, nothing's really happening. But if you look under the water, the legs are going crazy and there's a lot of activity happening. That's the way this project has been. There have been a ton of things happening on the site. You'll hear about that. A ton of things happening, getting us ready to approach 2025. And from a fundraising standpoint, we continue to gain momentum. We continue to connect with key folks in the community who want to see this become a reality. And now we'll be reaching out to a lot of people over the next few months, engaging them in the process. So with that, I'm gonna turn it back over to Rick.
Alright, so we're going to get into a bit of a design update, really high levels to kinda give you a feel for what this project is shaping up to look like on the site. The guiding principles of this, let me take one step back. We're in, we just completed what we call the Light Schematic Design Phase and Kerry will talk more about that. But during that phase of the project was all about getting everyone on the same page. And part of that was, you know, hiring our architect, which was a big deal. And so we hired a architectural firm called CBT Architects. They're out of Boston. And they just hit all the, all the important um aspects of what we were looking for. They really have a great feel for working in a space with uh, you know, that's in nature like this site. You know, they have a good sense of that. Um, and they just clicked with our entire team. So um CBT Architects has been leading this kind of design effort. And, you know, we talked about what are our principles and our guiding principles are around health and well-being, right? And achievement, relationship, and belonging are all the things we're going to really make sure happen in this facility. State-of-the-art programs is a real driver. We need to make sure this facility is prepared to, you know, just deliver incredible programs for, you know, young children, older children, seniors, everybody. Making sure that this is an inclusive facility at every turn. Like we've got this awesome opportunity to, from the beginning, be intentional about making sure, like where does that elevator go? You know, where are the stairs? You know, how do we get in and out of this building? What's the parking lot look like? So we don't, like often, I think in past projects, just in the world, you know, it gets done first. And then you say, oh, by the way, now let's figure this out. But we can do it ahead of time and we are. And finally, you know, integrating, there's more and more studies about just how important it is for mental health purposes for us to be outside and to enjoy nature and all of that. And this site lends itself to that, like more so than like a Framingham facility where you've got a beautiful facility and some space out back, but not like this. So for us to be able to take full advantage of that is a real driver for us. I won't really get into a lot of this, but you do see the bottom-left box, sustainability. We talk about it a lot. You know, we're really trying to make sure that we do everything within our power to make sure that, you know, we're doing everything we can to have a sustainable facility that is, um, that we're all gonna be really proud of. I kinda like this slide. We talk a lot about spaces that connect and inspire. So when you go to some facilities, older facilities, you walk in and you're on the first floor, the second floor, the third floor. But our architects are working hard to try to create, and this is, this helps with, I think, with kind of, I forget what you call it, Kerry, but like inclusion through visibility, right? So you can kinda see what's happening, you know, in a facility, like from one floor, you can see up. In some areas, you can see down. You'll feel like you're part of the whole thing. And so that's kind of exciting. And again, to kinda reemphasize, program is the driver. So having a space that is great for all sorts of different types of programs is uh the number one um kinda guiding principle for us. Like Peter said, creating a sense of community for everybody, you know, by designing the space properly is right there as well. And inclusion at every turn. I love the picture of the Hoyts up there and our Hoyt statue. You see Tachana McFadden um there in our Early Learning Center. And just having a facility that brings all of our communities together, it's never been a more important time, I think, than now for a place like that. And finally, you know, taking full advantage of that beautiful facility and our connection to the Trolley Brook Trail. You can see there's our entrance, you know, where the little easement from the Y going in there is. And um you'll see when I flip to the next page, we're working hard to make sure our internal kinda trail system on the 12 and a half acres connects to Trolley Brook. And so that's exciting. And on that, you know, on, in that, on that kinda campus space, there will be fields. So when you see these kids kicking around balls and playing outside, there's gonna be space for that, which is pretty exciting. So that's kind of a money shot for tonight, for you to kinda get a, a feel for the whole campus. You know, I mean, just I'll pause there for a minute so you can take a look. I mean, that is something. You know, Kerry will talk a little bit more about why, you know, it landed in the spaces it does. But um you can see, you know, the front of the building, the Early Learning Center over there to the left, field space to the back. And all of it connects on its way to Trolley Brook on the very backside of the property. And this is just, it blown up a little bit bigger for you to see. So that's Memorial Drive. The parking lot is on Memorial Drive. And you can see the two red arrows going in. A lot of time it's been done, right, talking about, you know, traffic and how we're gonna get into this facility and out of this facility and disrupt, you know, the traffic on that street just as little as possible. So it's a nice smooth way in, smooth way out. You know, with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Kerry to talk a little bit more about, you know, how the design, you know, how we got to some of these and um go from there. So thanks.
Hi, I'm Kerry DeLeo um with Skolora Consulting. We are an Ashland-based project management firm. So like everyone else who's been involved with this project, we're super excited because we can almost see the site from our, from our office, um, which is right across from the commuter rail. So like Rick said, um, actually, I'll go back to what Peter said. The paddling under the surface, lots and lots of activity happening, right? So there's a lot of planning that goes into making a, a facility like this, but also checking ahead of time to make sure when we get to you and it comes to site plan approval and advertising this to the world, that we've done our due diligence, we know we can do what we wanna do, right? So um I'll kinda go through that process uh so you can see. But I just wanted to give you a high-level overview of the building itself. And, and this is what we're calling the master plan. Um, if we go back here, I'd say the full master plan means everything is done, including, you know, what's going on down the hill and what's going on in the future and, and all of that. But zoomed in, what those building blocks, so the, the main core of this building is gonna be that membership center. So that focus on health and wellness, serving the community, childcare, um, you know, after-school care, childcare for drop-ins, uh all of that, gymnasium. Um, and then also off to the side, you'll see that ELC. So again, the ELC has been a core piece of this program. We've also are planning for, you know, building in an aquatic center so that, that uh aquatics, first chunk would be like a family aquatic center, you know, entertainment pools. And then the second chunk is more of a, a lap pool addition. And then there's also room for gym expansion. The, what you can't see here, which I think is important to this site, is there's an existing berm that runs along Memorial Drive. And so one of the first conversations we had was, you know, what does this wanna look like from the street, right? Do you wanna be running the marathon and be able to go by Dunkin' Donuts and see the building up the hill? Or do you wanna approach the site and then discover it as you enter? And what, we, we started talking about those connections with nature. We kinda thought, you know what, it makes more sense. There's gonna be a sign. People are gonna know they're coming to the Y. But you're gonna go past that berm, which will be kind of a shielding. And then as you kind of work your way into the site, you discover more and more, right? You pull in, okay, this is where I put my car. Oh, look at the building. Oh, behind the building, there's more programming. Oh, look, it's connected to the trails, et cetera. So that was kind of the design, big-picture approach. And I'm not an architect. Um, I just play one at public meetings. So um, so I'll just, you know, I'm just repeating all the, all the things that I've heard, but that was kind of the approach. If you're familiar with the site, which many of you are, you know, it drops off quite a bit to the back, right? So that idea of, you know, trying to bring the building forward and then, you know, put the parking in the back, it just didn't seem like it worked right. And what we really wanted to preserve is what is going on out back, right? Those views, that connection to nature, the trees, all of that. So there's a couple of different areas that are um identified here that the survey showed us there's some higher ground. What if we take a couple of those higher-ground areas and connect them? And create kind of what we're calling the development space. So that bar of building is going to land on that ridge where we already have some high ground. And then the grade drops off behind. The beauty of that is it allows us to kind of build a really straightforward building, right? It does a couple of things um from a building perspective that I think this shows is, one, because of that grade drop-off, we can bring the scale of the building down so that from the main entry, it doesn't look that big. But then we have a lower level that actually opens out to the, to the ground so that you have good daylight and you can really take advantage of some of those um features of the site. Um, the other thing that really is nice about this is the orientation of the building. So the north side of the building is the side that faces the woods, right? So we can really take advantage of northern light, filtered light. And then the southern-facing side is where we would have to control the sunlight. Um, it's much more controllable when you're dealing with a smaller volume on the front, right? So this is, you know, still very much conceptual, but that idea of letting that light filter in from the back, like Rick mentioned, trying to have some multi-level spaces so that you can kinda see in, see out, see up, see down, all of that, um, really should make for a very transparent building for the users and also for the sunlight. And then this is just the stacking diagram that was done to try to understand, you know, where do the floors wanna be, right? So the gym is on the main floor, but instead of coming in on the first floor, you're actually gonna come in on the second floor so that from an accessibility perspective, nobody is more than one floor away from where they wanna go, right? So some really. So some really, really thoughtful work that went into that to make sure that we are keeping that at the forefront, and that we're also planning not only for now, but planning for what could this site be over the course of its lifetime, right? And making sure that as programs change and needs change, that we're designing a building that the Y can renovate and multipurpose over years and years and years. So the status of where we are. Like Rick said, we've just finished what we're calling a light schematic phase, uh, a lot of work, but still some schematic-level stuff left to do. Um, and what that meant was it got us a set of documents that we could price, dial in on some budgets, make sure we were not too far off from our targets. We were also able to, um, start the process, because of the HUD funding, there's a kind of, long list of items that we have to, uh, fill out, complete, et cetera, as it relates to environmental assessment, so, pretty comprehensive environmental planning. Um, we were able to get going on that, and actually, we are just about at the point where we are ready to submit that to HUD for our, uh, HUD, they, they called it ESA one or something, but, uh, ESI, so, um, that will go in, we'll get a ruling from HUD that makes sure that we can actually build the daycare facility with their funds on our site, all of that seems, so far, no red flags, which is fantastic news. But as part of that, again, some of the stuff you haven't seen, test pits, borings, um, survey work, uh, we've done preliminary traffic studies, we did a noise study, we've done a endangered species study, we've done, um, yeah, all, all the things, right, and, um, the attitude was, you know, some of these things may come up when we go in for HUD, let's just do them now, so that when the question gets asked, we say, yeah, we've already, we've already taken care of that, right? Yes, we have, no ledge party, we're hoping for no ledge, uh, we know we have a lot of, lot of big rocks, um, so we are, um, we're really hopeful that we don't hit anything too catastrophic out there. And then what's coming next? So, uh, as we've now completed that light schematic, we're moving into the next phase, which is to finish up the schematic, um, exercises, which from an outsider's view, probably not a lot is going to change, right, it's more just kinda checking some boxes so that we can dive into what we call design development, which is when the design really starts to get developed, as it says. Um, but that's when we dial in on things like, what are the mechanical systems? Locking in the rooms, what does the building look like? All of those types of things, what are we gonna put in for finishes, flooring, signage, et cetera. Um, so we will work on that through the winter, and, um, we've also started now, clearly, uh, starting our meetings with the town, we wanna engage you all, uh, we wanna engage the community to understand what folks are looking for, make sure all of those surveys, you know, are being answered, and that the, the Y is doing what they can to answer as much as they can for the community with this building. And then when we are finished with that, that's when we'll be coming back to the town to start talking about site plan approval and next steps, you know, meeting with all the departments and making sure there's no questions, um, so that we can progress that, so that when we get ready for construction documents, everybody is ready to roll. This, again, is just the high-level, I can't really read it, but just showing kind of where we've been, um, the last few months leading up to this, and then moving forward, you know, going to the board, um, you know, next spring for an update, and, and continuing to go back to the board of the Y to, to keep us moving. That's all I have. Thank you.
Yeah, so the next several months are big months, you know, we have a lot of work to be doing. Our, our board is a hundred percent supportive, and our, at our last meeting, you know, gave us the green light to keep this, keep everything moving. And so that's what we're doing. What Peter and Carrie didn't really talk about is part of this, over the next several months, we'll be starting to talk to banks, you know, about potential financing. We're working with third-party to really look at our pro forma budgets, so between financing, pro forma budgets, you know, and continued, um, fundraising, you know, all of that's gonna come together in June. And there are no red flags, we feel good about how everything is moving, so, uh, you know, our, our goal, our hope is, in June, all of these pieces come together, we don't have anything come sideways on us between now and then, and if that's the case, you know, the ball keeps rolling. And so with that, I guess I would ask, are there any questions for us?
Questions, comments? Joe, go ahead.
Rick, thank you, uh, great presentation, thank you all for being here. First time I had an opportunity to really read what you folks had ready to present, and, um, you had one, uh, slide up there with respect to sustainability, and I know that Ashland, we're trying to be as green as we can, and with some of the newer buildings that we recently built in the last couple of years, um, we started going geothermal. Is that something that you folks would probably entertain, uh, if it's, if it's feasible for you folks to do something like that?
If you could come over to the microphone, Carrie, sorry.
I could try, but Carrie's the, we're the expert, yeah.
We did already have that conversation, um, I think, uh, the adjacency of this site to the Nianza site makes folks a little bit nervous about doing anything that goes down into the water table. So we, at this point, are, have tabled that discussion, um, because of both cost and, uh, risk aversion, if that makes sense.
Solar is on the.
Solar is definitely, like, we're already in talks, um, with, uh,
Solar sponsor.
Yeah, with, to talk about solar, we, uh, this will be a high-performance building, right, so very, very well insulated, um, and then fully-electric building, which is now provide, you know, necessary for the, the energy code. Yeah.
Yeah, I think 2025, that kicks in, if I'm not mistaken, right?
Yeah.
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 Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate that.
Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, I just wanna say, uh, thank you, it, it's very exciting, um, I know that, um, it's been really a topic of conversation in town for several years now, and people have been so excited, and certainly the pandemic, uh, kinda put, squashed a few things along the way. Um, it's been great to know that you all are back working full steam ahead. Um, and I certainly, for, for one, I, I can't even begin to tell you how many people have talked to me about how excited they are with this project, so, so thank you very much.
You're all very welcome.
Anybody else? Makita, Brandy?
Thank you very much for the presentation. I know that, um, you know, we've talked, you know, over the years, and I know you had said that you need to get to a certain point with fundraising before you're able to break ground. Was that seven, is it seventy percent fundraising? Is that sort of like what your target is before? Or is it, am I not remembering it correctly? I might not be remembering.
Yeah, that's a, it's kind of a complicated question.
Okay.
You know, it's, it's a combination of, um, of, of fundraising and financing and the pro forma budget, what this, what this facility is gonna generate is revenue to offset debt and that kind of thing, so it's, it's a, it's a full-blown analysis that's happening right now. And so i- it's kinda hard to say, you, you know, fifty percent pledges, you know, you know, identified would be nice, you know, that's a goal of ours, is to get to, you know, that as soon as we can, hopefully, you know, in the months ahead. But it, it, it's a little bit more complicated than just saying that.
Okay.
But right now, there are no red flags, and all of those buckets are lined up where they're supposed to be today, so.
Yeah, I would, I would, I would reiterate that we're all very excited about this project. Um, I'm curious, I know the Phase Two, Phase Three for the aquatics program, is that going to be like part of, cause at, at some point, probably, I would assume after June, you guys will have everything kinda pulled together and be ready to submit an application to our planning board and that process. Are, are you planning to include those, those additional phases in that whole planning process, or you are, okay.
Yeah, we're going all-in on site plan approval for the entire project, you know, and our goal is to just keep moving and have this whole master plan done.
Yeah.
Like, keep, just keep it moving. You know, the beauty of the way it's designed is if there needs to be any pauses along the way, you can. You know, you don't have to finish the entire thing all at once, and as you all know, the cost of, of, of putting up facilities like this has grown pretty dramatically. So, you know, we know that, um, the, the membership side of this facility is, it's gonna be thirty-six million anyway, could be as much as forty million, and by the time you finish an entire master plan, by the time we get there, Carrie, we could be talking fifty-five million dollars. Right, and so the good news about the way this has been designed is we can move before we, uh, we don't have to do the whole master plan all at once, but we can get the ball rolling, and then that will create more momentum, and and so that's how we're.
What's the square footage of the initial part of the project?
Thirty.
So the, it's about nine and forty, right? Nine thousand for the ELC and forty thousand, I'd say.
It's, it's approaching forty, you're right.
Yeah, it's, it's maybe just under, we're trying to keep it.
Yep.
Yeah. Somewhere forty to fifty thousand.
Thank you.
And I just love looking at the design and kind of the vision that you guys are putting together, it just, it really kind of, I can, I can kinda see it in my brain how it's going to flow on the site, and it's, it's, it's pretty, it's pretty cool. Like, I can just imagine, like, light coming into the window, I'm just, yeah, so, so thank you.
And I would say, if you haven't gone up to walk and you wanna go walk, let me know, or reach out to Peter and Rick, and they'd love to, you know, be happy to take you up there, cause there's a nice path now that takes you into the site, and it's really cool.
Yeah, the steps.
And, yeah.
Nice granite steps.
Yep.
Granite right out of the rock.
Great, well, uh, thank you all for coming and presenting, it's great for our community to hear the update, and, um, I'm sorry we won't be able to join you on November nineteenth, that's unfortunate, but I'm sure it'll be a big success, and I'll be bidding from town meeting.
The silent auction, you can still, still can check in.
If we had any flexibility, we wouldn't have gone on a town meeting.
I know, and it's tough.
That would be fun.
But thank you all for coming, sorry for the delay, but greatly appreciate it. Okay, sounds good, sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you, good night.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thanks.
I was thinking we should, in, put, uh, you know, we should give everybody a piece of paper as they come in, I know we talked about some information about the forty B versus the, um, MBTA, and I know Tricia Kendall, I meant to talk to you about that, Mike is putting together a presentation, but just a sheet of some updates, cause I know we're not really allowed to give updates during town meeting, you know, Mr. Schuster is very strict about certain things, so, but wouldn't that be nice? Just put a QR code, say, some updated information about the,
That'd be great.
About the Y, and, and just have, take it to this presentation, you know, and some of the,
And the burial ground, too, for that matter.
Yeah, yes, yes, exactly, I mean,
In general, I think.
Yeah, there's so many things, and just put a little QR code on there, and, like, take people right to them, I, I would help do that.
The other thing, what we could, interesting, is to give them a link to the town manager's newsletter, right? Maybe if they're coming to town meeting and they don't get that newsletter, they could,
To sign up.
Sign up?
Yeah.
Yep. That's great.
Yeah.
What? Okay, wonderful, okay. Moving on, hopefully we can get through the rest of the things fairly quickly before we go into exec session. First is the review of special town meeting warrant articles. We've been through this a few times, we're gonna go through one more time if there's any other questions, and also sort of discuss who might be doing, a couple of them are select board, where we would then present it, so. Uh, is this gonna be Jen taking us through this?
Yeah, of course.
Okay.
So the first article is the free cash appropriation. Um, and that will be putting funds into our general stabilization fund, OPEB, sped stabilization fund, and the capital fund. And we, we have fully met with the finance committee, and recommendations will post this online, so the full warrant book will be online tomorrow.
Okay.
Um, the second article is the budget amendment, and that's really just, um, adjusting our capital um, out, outlay appropriation um, from two-point-six-nine-zero-zero-zero to three-seven-two-three-nine-two-five. Um, and I think we discussed this at our last meeting, but when we met with the finance committee, and we sort of talked that through, they sort of had, um, they were of the opinion, sort of making our motion that goes to town meeting as simple as possible, and then in their recommendation, they sort of qualified it as that, this is the way to obligate all of our remaining opera funds by the deadline of, um, December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. Um, we have our annual, uh, property tax exemption for eligible seniors, um, and that will be at twelve percent. Um, Article Four is really just a cleanup article from May, um, we had basically, uh, a typographical error, um, and we had, when we accepted the gift from the Hobbiton area land trust, we referenced, um, map eighteen, lot one-hundred, as opposed to map twenty-seven, and so that's just to make this correction before we
Right.
complete that transaction. Um, Article Five will authorize, uh, a borrowing for Water Main Replacement Project, um, to a million dollars, um, and that was built into our rate conversation previously, and so when Dan Mauer, um, and Brittany gave that presentation, this is the project that they were talking about.
Yep.
Um, CP, CPC is recommending a feasibility study with the city of Framingham to, uh, look at Washaken Pond and to sort of restore it, they've had a lot of issues around cyanobacteria, and this will be the first step to hopefully, um, rectifying that issue. Um, and the city of Framingham is paying seventy-five percent of the study, and we have agreed to pay twenty-five, and that's with that eighteen thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty.
Is, I'm sorry, is that coming out of the recreation bucket?
It is coming out of the undesig-
Undesignated fund, okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Um, Article Seven is, uh, accepting a new bylaw, and that is the blight bylaw, which you received a presentation from, um, our building commissioner, Doug Scott, and that's really just giving, um, the building department, health department, and actually, police and fire can also be in forces. Um, a tool that if there is a blighted property, and sort of the, the bylaw does go into definition of what that would be, um, some tools to help the homeowner get into compliance. Um, there is also, um, it'll also create, um, a database of vacant properties, so if there is a vacant property that they would register, and that way, we would be aware of it.
Can I, I'd just like to say something with respect to that, the, um, town and native does not have anything like this, and when they saw this language, they may just take it and run with it.
That's great.
Yes, so, great job for getting that done.
Still gotta go through town meeting.
Yeah. Kind of a fee associated with that?
That would be nice, like a finder's fee or something, yeah, that would be nice. Yeah, I like that.
Um, Article Eight is the MBTA community's zoning bylaw, and I think there's been plenty of discussion sort of around that, the planning board has had its hearing, and they have, um, voted to recommend it at town meeting.
Good.
Um, and then the last article is Article Number Nine, and that's the purchasing of open spaceland in the town forest, so fifty-two acres, which we've also previously discussed here. I think the only change since the last time you looked at the warrant is that we did add a funding note, so we sort of discussed that, um, and sort of highlighted the, the sources. Um, it doesn't need to be in the article or the motion, but we sort of just kept it there, um, on the bottom, just, again, for a little bit more uh, information for the voters.
As you go out of town, down, uh, Myrtle Street, whereabouts does that begin, that property?
So, actually, so, if, if you go, as you go by Winter Street, right?
Yep.
So it borders, so the southern border borders Winter Street, right? And so as you're going along, you'll see some houses, and it runs along behind there. And, um, I would say you'll get to the town line, um, where's that's, there's that other road that goes into like a little residential, uh,
The other end of Winter Street, yeah.
And so that's pretty much the northern edge of the property.
Good.
I'd be happy to take you there.
Would we, would we have a map at town meeting?
Yeah, that'd be good.
Yeah.
That we can show exactly, like, where the parcel is.
Yeah, so for town meeting, we'll have a couple of slides, just one, a plot plan, and then also just the funding breakdown. Yeah, part of it, actually, that, um, the high-tension wires kinda transact.
It's, that's on the other side of the street, though, isn't it?
Yeah, the high, the high tension wires go through it.
I only look over where it's wide open over that way. Cause that's private property over there? That pretty wide-open space with high tension wires?
Yeah, if you're thinking on it, like, if you're going north towards Framingham, you're looking to the right, that's Jimmy Saruvi's property.
Who, who's property?
Jimmy Saruvi.
Oh.
And then if you go left, that's kind of the property.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, so of these, there's really only one that, that the select board would address, or would we? Okay, so, the property tax exemption, and then the blight bylaw, or the, okay. Okay. Oh, okay. Joe, would you like to do the property tax exemption? You typically do.
I do. I'd be happy to.
Okay. And then anyone want to do the, and, and really it's just an intro like to the blight bylaw. It's discussion, you know, very short and sweet as to what it is. Will the board of health and/or Doug be doing a presentation?
Um, we're still figuring out exactly how that's going to go.
Okay. 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 So let us know and then if you need one of us, then we can figure that out.
Yeah, I'm happy to.
Okay.
I'd be happy to.
Okay.
But I, but I would want backup.
Well, it would be, so typically it would be somewhat not, you know, because they'll go into detail in slides. It's a, a brief introduction of.
It's just an intro, right?
Yeah.
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 We'll let you take it, Brandy, if you don't mind.
That's fine.
I, I, you know, I will say, out of all of these, I've, articles have probably received the most calls, emails, et cetera. People stopping me about the, the blight bylaw.
Yeah. Yeah, cause it's new and, yeah.
Yeah.
Good or bad or just questioning?
Yeah, what are the questions, Michael?
Um, so I think it's, it's generally, uh, not very much in the way of questions. It's, uh, just a philosophical, um, you know, really discussion of.
Government overreach.
Government overre- overreach versus kind of maintaining, you know, public health and safety and, um.
Is this possibly going to turn into a conversation like the last time when Chief Davis was?
Joe, you know, you never know at town meeting. Um, you never know. But I, no, I, I do think there's obviously a philosophical, there could be a philosophical difference here and that's, I mean, that's what town meetings for, you know?
Is it, is it philosophical, but also sort of like, um, more, uh, implementation minded? Ie, like, I think we had a conversation about this when, when Doug came and, and talked to us about this, like, you know? I think one of the concerns that we talked about when he came up was, you know, how people can use, neighbors can use this as a punitive measure against each other.
It can be weaponized, yeah.
Right? So, uh, those are the sort of concerns that you're hearing from, from people as well? Or is it really just more of like the government, it's more of a government role sort of a thing?
Yeah, it's, it's really. It's really like, who the heck is the government to tell me like, uh, how high my grass can be, you know?
What I can give to that property. Got it, got it, got it.
And I think, you know, it's interesting, you know, I think there's probably some room for discussion at town meeting and maybe some compromise to be reached.
Mm-hmm.
You know?
Yep.
Maybe some things in the bylaw, you know, need to get modified or, you know.
Yeah. That's what town meeting is for?
Exactly. They haven't been, I mean, they haven't been bad conversations. They've actually been really good. And I mean, one person yesterday, I'm like, we're just going to disagree on this one because.
Yeah.
You, you think it's a homeowner's assoc- like it reads like a homeowner's association thing.
Right.
I feel like it's got a, like a health and safety component to it. And I do think that there is a line.
Yeah.
Um, and, uh, that's, that's, yeah. Everybody makes their best argument and.
I'm glad people are paying attention and enough to, to reach out and ask questions. That's good.
Anything else? Are you doing a town managers forum? Have you just?
Yeah, next Tues- Tuesday, five.
Tuesday at five.
Tuesday at five. Okay. Great.
And that's, and that's both zoom in in person or is it?
Yeah.
Yep, okay. Okay, good. Moving on to, we need to vote on the Warren barn plan. So we have the most updated MOU in our package. So, uh, Jen, I believe Jen, you're working on this. If you could take us through what changes we have seen or they've agreed to. And then we can have any other discussion and then take a vote on this.
Sure. Sure. I can do that. Um, so there's not a ton of changes since the last time we met and presented. So I think when we presented it last time, I sort of cautioned and said that we hadn't had a full conversation, um, with Framingham State University. But that we were proposing, you know, really around the, how we're going to split revenue, um, for the long-term lease of the barn. Um, and so, um, there was just really one small change on that. So that is on page four. Um, if you look at the facility use revenue, um, they did, um, accept the idea that forty percent of revenue would go to their project management, um, company, uh, currently Flic. For a project man- um, for property management, excuse me. Um, that includes sort of their cost, but then also, um, ongoing utilities and, uh, general maintenance. And that's within that forty percent. And we would take ten percent and put in a facilities maintenance and that's sort of for some of the bigger maintenance things that might pop up. And that way we're at least planning ahead. Um, and then the remaining fifty percent would be split equally between the town and FSU. We were sort of hoping, um, for two, uh, two waived fees, so two events that we could have, two activities or events at the facility with completely waived fees. They weren't really able to do that because that is how their property management, um, company sort of becomes whole. And so what we agreed to is that they would waive all the fees except for the project, the, the property maintenance. And so they'll do that for themselves as well as ours. So it'll be at a reduced, at a reduced fee. Um, we were sort of thinking like maybe that's where we'd have a retreat or we'd have some other town sponsored event there.
But just so real quick, that's just for the use of that facility?
Correct.
Right? So if we want to go to their, to the, to the White House or to the lodge, that isn't covered. This is specifically for this new facility. Okay, that makes sense.
And then there's no rental cost associated with public skate events at all. So that doesn't sort of work it.
For the public.
For the public.
Yeah, or even for us to use.
Because they're not going to have ice skates. You're basically bring your own ice skates and skate if you want. Okay.
Um, some of the other concerns I think you guys had were around liability. Um, so we've been working with them to receive their insurance binder. And so they, um, hold a one million, um, dollar general liability. Their project, their, sorry, their, um, management company also has a million. And then we also have a million. Um, and so they have some language, um, in there. We're sort of working with them to see if there is a possibility of increasing that, that would happen in the lease. And so, um, there's some language here that references that, um, liability will be referenced and worked out in the, like, forthcoming lease. I don't think that there were any, and then the other is, um, initially, so we are agreeing to pay one point five million dollars for our portion of the construction of this project. Um, and initially the MOU had suggested that anything, so if the bids come in, um, and the building is constructed and there was remaining funds available. That that would be used for, um, FFNE, so the furnishings, um, and other programming costs. So what we agreed to was that if it falls under a hundred thousand at the end of the day, it makes some sense to buy furniture so that it's furnished. Um, if it's above fifty percent, we will, we'll split the remaining fifty fifty in terms of like, we will get some funding back if it comes in, you know, significantly under budget. Um, which, you know, may be sort of wishful thinking in construction, but, you know, we're at least protected that way.
Originally, we were just going to replace the barn.
Mm-hmm.
What was that figure that we were going to put out for that?
A few years ago, it was what, one point two?
One point two?
One point two five?
With the mezzanine, I think.
Yeah, with the mezzanine, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we weren't able to do it when we went out to bid. I mean, this was years ago now. It's probably.
Yeah, I mean, it's been.
I mean, we weren't able to even start the project because we didn't have the funding source. And they have done, you know, they've done some work on their, making a real solid estimate to make sure that we are going to have enough money allocated for this project. And so it's pretty close that it's, we're, we're just, the one point five really just covers.
The barn, the shell.
Yeah. I mean, there's a, there's a couple of small things that, you know, maybe we could go back and forth, but it's pretty close.
Yes. Looks like it's going to be, and the, the, I believe the chillers are already sitting there for the ice skating rink.
Yeah, it's good. They're going to do like a temporary.
I'm like, you drive by and you.
Yeah, they're waiting for us to work out some final details on a right of access that would allow them to start that. So it would be temporary. And we did talk to them about it. So they would be temporary and it is a portion on our, on our property. And then while we're, they're under, we're under construction, they would find a second possible temporary location.
Temporary location, yeah.
And so, um, sort of build up that as a community asset and then it will be, um, then it will be there permanently. Brandy, I think you had a question when I sent it initially about sort of, you know, would it be there permanently? So they will have a concrete pad. That's the plan right now. Um, there are no, there're not going to be walls. It's not going to look like a hockey. Um, it's really going to look.
No boards you can like check me into, maybe?
No, it's going to be no boards. So they're actually going to sort of surround it at this point sort of with hay bales or something like that, like pretty natural. So it will look like a, a pond.
Pond, yeah.
And so there'll be, you know, some places, yeah. And I think it will sort of go with the, the look and the feel of the barn. So there won't be any of those walls that they have to find a place to.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Take down and find a place. And then they're hoping to use that patio for the programming, you know, if they have a bridal shower or something like that.
Oh, that's a great idea.
To like, use it as like an extension of the.
Something in the offs, in the off.
On the season, yeah.
Shoulder season, yeah.
So think, like, I just realized, like, so in a couple of years, like, we could have a new YMCA. Uh, like a nice new community YMCA. We could have this community facility over at the Warren Conference Center. Pretty cool, man.
Yeah.
It's like, I mean.
Lots of good stuff going on.
Wow.
Yeah.
That's pretty.
It slopes down pretty wide.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I, I like, all I could think of because of the winter months coming is the sweating.
Yeah.
There you go.
I do have a good sweaty.
Sure. I, I, I just stood there and thought, oh my God, we don't have to go down the rebel street and have a slaying.
Nice.
Stone Park gets a little short too.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, uh, any.
Sorry.
I'm trying to move us along. Okay. Okay, but I'm try- we're, I, I don't want you guys complaining when we're trying, when we're having to run late. Um, if there's no other questions or comments or concerns, if I can get a motion to support the Warren barn, uh, MOU as presented.
I'll say.
Great. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor? I, opposed. Okay, that passes five zero.
Thank you guys.
Very much.
Thank you for all the work.
Thank you for the work and we look forward to progress on that. Okay, next. So that's associated with that. Looking at, oh. Forty Bs.
Oh, sorry.
An update on the forty B projects approved by Mass Housing, the two hundred and fifty units at the mill site and then two hundred and twenty-five units at sixty-one. I'm sure you all saw the email that we received regarding the concerns, which I know many of us echo. We'll see how we move forward, but, uh, Michael, update.
Yeah, just, uh, so a quick update. So we did get an application in for the mill site. After review, we deemed that incomplete and so kicked it back. Um, the developer obviously wasn't, uh, too thrilled with that, but, uh, agreed to resubmit. Um, and we're still waiting for that application. So that's important because, again, once we get that application, it's reviewed, it's deemed complete and it gets stamped in. That's when the clock starts. So we would have thirty days.
I understand that question. So even though he submitted it and it wasn't complete, the clock doesn't stop.
The clock doesn't start. Yeah, that's correct. So, um, so yes, I, I do anticipate, you know, having that, um, having that come in. Well, it's already Wednesday, so, uh, so it could be in by, yeah, by end of this week or next week. Um, and then actually the, uh, the other one on Waverly Street, uh, we did reach out and, uh, you know, obviously they've received their site eligibility letter from Mass Housing. And, um, they of course were aware of it and they basically said, we'll submit it when we submit it. They didn't really have a timeline.
And I would say we don't need to reach out to them again and.
I would agree.
See if they wait a little while to get it submitted. That'd be actually easier in regards to timing and, and the work that needs to be done. Okay?
Yeah, and just, yeah, just so, you know, I mean, we are kind of, you know, as Carrie and the YMCA talked about, you know, you just see kind of the ducks floating along the, the pond surface. But there's a lot of stuff churning underneath and so, you know, we have been working to get peer reviewers and, and starting to, to line all of that up. So.
Wonderful. Okay. Any other questions or comments on that?
We haven't heard any, any, from any of the abutters at the sixty-one Waverly Street site. I know when this first came out, the, the abuttered right on Waverly. That was the first time they were made aware. Nobody contacted them. I don't think it's a town's responsibility.
Right.
That we're going to develop this responsibility. Uh, so maybe they need to be reminded that something has to be logged in those files.
Yeah, I mean, once, once something gets filed, there isn't a butters notification and things like that, yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't. They haven't filed yet.
They haven't.
The Waverly.
When they file with the ZBA.
Has not filed.
With, with the ZBA.
They, they gave us their, through Mass Housing, we were notified that they were, and then that whole process that we went through. But because nothing has been filed, the abutters have not been needed to be. Okay. Okay, moving on. Oh, okay. Um. So our calendar for the rest of the year. So obviously we have a meeting today. We then have town meeting on the nineteenth. So we will not be meeting on the twentieth. We're not meeting two nights in a row. Uh, then obviously Thanksgiving week, we have our meeting on Wednesday, the fourth. We typically do not do our second meeting, but please leave that night open because we typically get together to, uh, discuss, um.
Our holiday.
Our holiday season. So it's a social, it's a social event. So just don't, don't, uh, don't fill your calendar with something else on the eighteenth. Okay. Uh, one thing I do want to bring up, we did not put the November, the December, the, I'm sorry, the January calendar on here. We can't meet on January first, which would be our first meeting of the year because it's a holiday. Uh, so that means we wouldn't meet until the fifteenth. With everything going on, we may need to add another meeting, um, in January. So be thinking about that as you're looking at your January calendar. Um, I don't know when it will be yet. It'll depend on what the meeting needs to be about and, um, what else is going on. So just be aware that we will most likely add a second meeting in January. And then just while we're talking about it, the MMA is the twenty-third, twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth. If you're planning, if you'd like to go, ask Susan and she'll register you. If anyone else goes on Friday, they have a great, it's the WeMo luncheon and that's always a great event. So. I know Michael's not as eager about it recently.
No, I, I don't go to the WeMo event.
No, not the WeMo event, but, okay. Uh, let's see. I heard you took care of a lot of the reminders.
Yeah.
And the consent agenda as well as the update on the select board room and technology. So I believe all that's left is priority project updates.
Yeah, I can do this fairly quickly.
Okay.
Thanks, Jen. Uh, so downtown, so they did start working on, um, on the front street side. Uh, it's one oh two property maintenance. Um, of course, they've, uh, hit rock ledge. Um, I'm like, there's like nothing there. So, um, so they're, they're working through that. Um, they did, uh, they are going to come back next week. Um, I did let them know that they could work on Monday, um, as it is a town project. So they're typically exempt from, from any of those, uh, any of those restrictions. But, um, yeah, so our, already we're a couple of days behind schedule, but, uh, hopefully they'll be able to make that up pretty quick. Um, and then we've got the bids, uh, you know, working on getting the bids out for the actual electrical connections too. Because the goal is to really kind of have this seamless. As soon as, uh, one oh two property maintenance gets done with the excavation work. And laying the conduit, you can just bring the electricians in and, and stuff. And the good news is one oh two property maintenance actually has an electrician on their team and they look like they're going to try to bid. But, you know, it's to the lowest bidder. So we'll see. Um, so there's that. Um, one twenty-six, I think I did update you on this.
Actually.
Oh, yeah.
Real, um, I ha- when have all, I mean, I'm hoping that all the business owners have been notified as to when they're going to be affected. Um, and if we could maybe also somehow make this available to the public so they're aware or, I'm not quite sure how we might do that, but.
We could put it on the project page.
Okay.
But yeah, all the businesses, so it's required that, um, before they start work on a property, they have to give them a week's notice ahead of time.
Okay.
Um, and it gives them the opportunity to kind of work around hours and, and all of that good stuff.
Yeah, so I'd hate for them to be impacted too much by this. Um, and same with the cut over, right? When the cut over happens, they'll be given notification of the window of, because they'll, the electricity will have to be cut and then reconnected. Okay.
So, and just a quick question. So I know that the weeks of work that we're looking at, um, has, you know, this is kind of spaced out over nine weeks.
Mm-hmm.
Are they going to be able to, to be able to, if the ground freezes, are they going to be able to continue to work? Like, is that?
If the ground freezes, it, it would be a little bit more difficult, but, um, you know, just based on history, things.
I mean, it's eighty degrees today.
Yeah.
It's ridiculous, yeah.
I mean, last year it didn't freeze really.
Okay.
Um, it didn't, the, the year before. I mean, we were pouring concrete in November, like, it's crazy.
Okay. So we don't think at least for the relatively short term that there would be any issues?
Any issues, no.
Still working through?
Maybe. Well, there's no such thing. So, you know, right? So it's all, it's all, it's all a. So it's all, it's all, it's all a dream.
Any other questions or comments on the downtown? Anything else on downtown? Okay, Michael, keep going, thank you.
So one twenty-six, I think I did, uh, let you know, but just in case I didn't, Verizon is actually out there, um, and moving the, um, moving the wires. Yeah, so, so that's a huge, huge, um.
I went over and looked one day, but I couldn't really tell exactly what they were doing.
Yeah. It's, it's magic, Claudia. Um, and, you know, I don't know if you've noticed, they have, um, we have really tried to get them to clean up some of the area a little bit. I see a little bit of a, of a difference. Nothing that, you know, I'm really excited about, but making some efforts. Yeah. Okay.
Nothing else? Okay. Uh, we're gonna do board reports, and then we'll go into exec session. If anybody has anything.
Uh, no, just, uh, are, are we doing the board reports now?
Yeah, board reports, and then we'll go into exec session, so.
Oh, okay. Uh, yeah, just really quickly, I wanted to acknowledge the ta- the efforts of the town clerk and, uh, and volunteers for yesterday's, uh, federal election and, and, uh, Massachusetts election, I guess, too. Um, you know, I think it's, it's, it speaks volumes about how smoothly and how professionally things were run yesterday. In the town of Ashland, we have a lot to be proud of. Um, so I just wanted to shout out the, the staff and the volunteers that made that happen, uh, successfully. And I also wanna give a shout out to W A C A T V and their exceptional election coverage, uh, throughout, so. That's, that's it, that's it for me.
Could I just?
Yeah, go ahead, Michael has the numbers for us.
Yeah, sorry before. Yeah, Makita and.
No, that's okay, before you go, Claudia. No, no, no.
No!
No, no, you're fine.
No, no, you were mine. I was like, oh, I've got these numbers.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's all good. Yeah, and, and thank you for acknowledging Cindy and, and her team. They did a, an amazing job. Um, we actually had about a seventy-six percent turnout, um, which was, um, about ten percent less than, than the last presidential election, but still a lot compared to, you know, a, um, a local. Um, so we had, uh, nine thousand eight hundred and six total voters, um, and that excludes some of the, the absentee voters. Um, and those can't be counted until, uh, five P M. on Friday, November eighth. But, um, on Election Day, we had actually almost thirty-six hundred people vote on Election Day. Um, and, uh, almost, uh, two thousand voted early in person, and, um, forty-two hundred people voted by mail. So, forty-two hundred.
Forty-two hundred?
Yeah. So, anyway. Sorry, I didn't include that in my initial report.
That's okay.
Thanks for reminding me, Makita.
Claudia?
Yeah, I was thinking, I've been busy, but then I was thinking, well, wait a second, we just had a meeting last week, so. So I, I don't have much to report on, but I just did wanna e- echo Makita's, uh, comments about, you know, the work that happens behind the scenes when we vote. And, uh, you know, I've certainly, in the last couple of years, seen, seen just how extensive it is. Um, and, and really, because we do vote on so many days now, the, their work starts much earlier and goes on for, you know, even, even after Election Day. So, um, so definitely, it's, um, they did a great job. I don't think we made the news for running out of ballots or anything, so. Yeah, congratulations to us, thank you.
Very good. Okay, Joe?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, echoes, uh, the sentiments from both Makita and, um, Claudia with respect to the, uh, efforts of the, uh, Clerk's Office, uh, last Saturday. Um, I was very happy to at least provide an hour's worth of, uh, coverage to the, uh, Select Boards, uh, office hours at the library. It was very nice. Uh, we had, um, while I was there, we did have a very, uh, meaningful conversation about a bunch of things that, uh, were going on in the town by, uh, by a couple of residents, and greatly appreciated. And, uh, I'd just like to remind people that on November twelfth, it's, uh, veteran, the Veterans Luncheons at the, um.
Community Center.
Thank you, yes, Community Center. And it's being sponsored by the Ashland Fire and Ashland Police Departments, uh, starting at noon time. Uh, I will be there, hope to see others there as well. And, um, that's it, that's all I have, Madam Chair, thank you.
Brandy?
So I will also be really quick because we just met last week. Just wanted to, um, let folks know that the Community Center, um, is still looking for volunteers for the holiday program. Um, so if, if you would like to be a donor, um, and either adopt.
A family.
A family or a child, um, you could also decide to do filler gifts, or you can donate gift cards. Um, they are still looking for volunteers to help with the program. So, um, please reach out to our Human Services Team. Um, Courtney Laughlin is like.
They still have a form, too, where you can sign up that's on their website.
Yes, and I think it's on our website, too. So, um, so people can, can use that to, to, um, to sign up. And, 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 you know, we are probably about a month away from when gifts need to be delivered, so, um, we'll all probably be getting our, our, you know, families' information pretty soon, so, um, so if you're able to help, sign up, thank you.
Yeah, and just, um, what was I gonna say? I was gonna add to that, now I can't remember. Oh, Michael, could you maybe bump that up in your newsletter this, this week? Um, you know, just put the link maybe to the donor form?
Oh.
Right up at the, in the early, 'cause it, you, you know, you have to dig down to get to it.
Yeah, I mean, and I was, yeah, we were talking, like, I'll probably put, like, some personal appeals out there, too, like, because we are behind a little bit.
Yeah, we are a little bit behind from previous years, um.
Oh, really?
Yeah, we have the same number of kids, just a little fewer donors. Um, we'll do some sort of more directed outreach, but, um, yeah.
Do you have a list of people who did it last year?
Yeah, we always reach out to them.
Yeah, yeah, so we always reach out and, um, just sort of cross-referencing now. Um, and certainly, things are coming in.
I think they told me, like, uh, four or five came in last night, you know, it's, it's.
Yeah, since Friday, we've had like seven or eight.
I think it's hard when it's eighty to think about holidays, you know? It's like this sort of weird vortex, but the time's like, you know, it's ticking away here, so, um, it'd be great if people wanted to donate and just haven't got around to it, it'd be great.
Yeah. Okay.
That's it for me.
Okay, couple of things. Dog park update, the dog park, thanks to Jen's work and our designer, we went before Concom on Monday night. They had to extend it because we don't have our D E P. number. And the goal is to, we are going to Planning Board on the fourteenth, uh, and the goal is shovel in the ground sometime in the spring. It's looking really nice, and we want, we need to get it in by February so that we are still eligible for the Stanton Grant, which is half of our funding. Uh, tomorrow night, I am meeting with Open Space and Rec, as well as with Becca, to review the new timeline, to work with them to get the Open Space and Rec Plan completed. Uh, if you're interested, Garden Club is meeting on Saturday at ten A M. in the library. If you wanna start a garden, if you just wanna talk to other people about gardening, like I said, it's an open meeting. Like I said, ten o'clock at the library, they meet downstairs in one of the smaller meeting rooms, and you can, I think, find information. I think they have a website as well, I should've known that. And then a couple of things coming up next week. We have a ribbon cutting for Chase Bank, which is Wednesday, and a chess company on the fifteenth. I don't have the exact name. Chess Masters, there we go. So it's great to see these new businesses coming in and really bringing different things to Ashland. Uh, and that is all I have. Just reminder for everyone, town meeting is Tuesday, November nineteenth, and hopefully we'll see you there. Uh, does anyone have the page for the exec? If I can borrow it? There you go. Perfect. Well, thank you all. It is, uh, nine thirty, we are ending early, but we are moving into an exec session, so pursuant to General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A six, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property identified on the Ashland Assessor's Map. It is totaling fifty-three point five acres, as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the ongoing negotiating position of the public body. And as I, as Chair, I've determined that the public discussion may have a detrimental effect on the negotiation position of the board. If I could have a motion to go into exec session and to not come back into public session. Second, great. Uh, let's do a roll call, vote in. Keegan?
Aye.
Bennett?
Aye.
Mignani?
Aye.
Kinsman?